Buddy, and I'd like to welcome you to the February 26th Council meeting. Oh, wait.
Take one.
Take one. Thank you, yeah. We may be here all night. Take 54. So, would everybody please write the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and does anybody have any requests for changes to the order of the agenda for tonight's meeting? No? Everybody all set? Anybody in public, staff? Are we good? All right, good. We'll move on to Council Communications and Announcements, and I would just like to report, we had interviews tonight in room 207 prior to coming into Council chambers, and we have appointed to the G-PAC as the Housing Representative, Kavi Badhi, to the East Side Representative, Thomas Newson, and to the Planning Commission, Terry Shugart. I'll sit there. And with that, do we have any other Council Communications or announcements? I just want to say, I love the decor in here. I was thinking maybe we can keep this up for the next couple of years or so. Might be great. Anyway.
Mr. Mayor, I have one report from the Peninsula. I gotta say this right. Peninsula Traffic Congestion Relief Alliance. It's a significant mouthful. Had a great meeting there and enjoyed joining the board. There was an interesting point when they did present their budget and the list of programs. San Carlos is conspicuous that we don't have any specific programs with this alliance. And I'm certain you've been copied on a number of emails from parents talking about safe sidewalks and pedestrian access. I think there is an opportunity to work with congestion relief on this, and I would just encourage anybody, if they have some ideas, please forward them, and we can go from that. The other thing I would like to point out is that this last weekend was Transit Camp. There were about half a dozen elected officials, and Samtrans, Caltrain, and a number of other agencies were represented along with a number of Web 2.0 developers. It was an extremely, it was a wonderful success. About 100 people attended, and we're expecting new programs to encourage and help people use transit. So, take a look, Google Transit Camp Bay Area, and people will find it.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Grocott.
Couple things. One, to segue off of Councilmember Ahmad, I think as all of us know, we have been getting a number of letters and emails from parents. It seems to be there's some organization of parents out there, if you will, who are concerned about safe routes to school, and I do think as a council, that's something we're going to need to address and probably talk about at our retreat coming up in March. The other item I wanted to mention, somewhat related, is on Saturday, I went on a B-PAC tour of projects. B-PAC being Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee with the county organization, and San Carlos has submitted a project to be considered. We'll see if it gets funded or not. That's yet to be seen, but just so folks know what the project is that our own B-PAC or Transportation Commission worked on and submitted, is to put what are called charos on the roadway. They are less than a bicycle lane, but it's kind of like having a bicycle lane. So, that would be the project, to put charos on Cedar, I believe it is, next to the park, and indicating a route for bicycles, you know, through town.
Great. Thank you very much. Councilmember Royce.
Just a few items. One is, this past weekend, San Carlos Green had its second of two work parties up at Vista Park. For you that don't know, we have a beautiful little setting up off of Crestview, just south of where Club Drive is. Beautiful view of the bay. A lot of weeding was done, and when it all ended at 1:00, the rains came in. There is going to be another work party coming up this next month for planting, but I encourage the public to get up there. It's just a beautiful sight of our city. Also this weekend, two really important events. Quonans is having their wine tasting this weekend on the first Saturday night at the Adult Community Center, and Spring Fling will also be having their annual event down at the San Mateo Expo, and you could do a Google search and find out more about each one of these events. So, that's it. Mr. Mayor?
Great. Thank you very much. Councilmember Royce. Vice Mayor Gressili?
I have nothing. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
All right. But before we move on, we have one other situation that we need to address. Councilmember Ahmad, are you going to start off on this?
Sure. I have an envelope. Let's see here. Tonight, let's, I'm so excited. Mine is being televised. I got, I'm. We have sound effects, huh? We actually wanted to say a special thing for the mayor, so congratulating Mayor and Disney Pixar producer Brad Lewis upon the achievement of receiving an Academy Award. Whereas, San Carlos is the proud home of Brad Lewis, producer of Ratatouille, The Tale of Remy, a rat who is torn between following his dreams of being a chef in Paris, France, or forever returning to his previous existence as a simple rat.
I believe I have envelope number two. Envelope number two says, whereas, Ratatouille has delighted audiences worldwide and won critical acclaim, earning more than 35 awards. Really? And 19 nominations, including an Oscar for Best Animated Feature, and...
Whereas, San Carlos Mayor Brad Lewis is the first mayor in history to be awarded an Academy Award from the Academy of Motion Pictures, Arts, and Sciences. And?
But wait, there's more. Whereas Mayor Lewis lives the movie's story and provides a shining example to all in San Carlos, proving his theory that by following one's own dreams, anything is possible. Now therefore be it resolved that the San Carlos City Council congratulates Mayor and Disney Pixar producer Brad Lewis upon the highest achievement in filmmaking, and freely extends, this is not a word I can do, ebullient and animated congratulations on the success of Ratatouille, dated this 26th day of February 2008. And we have a proclamation from the rest of us for you. Do you have music? Do you have music? Well, this is going to play you off, but that was... But actually, as anyone who watched the Academy Awards know, the director, for some strange reason, I don't know why, when you win the best picture, the producer goes up on stage. But when you win the best animated picture, the director goes up on stage. I don't know why that happened. There's a nice man, Brad Bird, he's a great guy, and his name was Brad. But Mr. Lewis didn't get to accept the Oscar. So, we have... An Oscar. There you go. And tonight, I'm privileged to present this to Brad Lewis with, as it says, Brad Lewis, producer of Ratatouille. So, you got your own. You have 30 seconds.
Yeah, I was going to say, if the music already played, I think I'm already offstage by now. Well, this is, it's obviously a surprise, or I might have worn my tux, but I think it's wrinkled and in a pile and probably needs cleaning after going to the Academy Awards. But, you know, the great thing about my experience at Pixar has been working with a great community of artists, and one of the great things in council is working with this team, and I gotta say, when people ask about being mayor and being producer, I feel like the citizens of San Carlos are, you know, as dear to me as all the people I work with all the time at Pixar. And so, I just want to thank you because you know you have family, my wife Regina and Ella and Jackson, you've got your community, and my professional friends, and everybody that's sort of risen above those things and become personal friends. Life doesn't get any better than this, so, thank you very much.
There you go. I had a great weekend. Yeah. All right. And now, with that, we're going to move on to public comment. And again, thank you very much. Sorry, just want to say that one more time. Pat Bell.
That was all great, but the most important question remains, what did Regina wear?
She wore an ivory, bronze beaded ivory gown made by Marchesa, and I'll tell you what, the best thing you can do is walk down the red carpet with a beautiful woman, because, you know, between Regis Philbin giving her the eyeball, but they didn't want to talk to me. I'm in animation, right? The stars are all around. Javier Bardem, you're a cutie. They didn't want to talk to us.
Well, they had that little picture of you in the paper, but they didn't have any picture of Regina. She had to all dressed up again and get her picture taken.
If you, she's probably watching, she'll be down here by 8:00. Yeah. If you ask. All right, and with that, we will move on to number five, which is approval of the consent calendar. The consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. So, do I have a motion, or does anybody like anything removed from the consent calendar?
I would like to move item G, partially because it's, seems to me, reading our agenda, it seems to fall under one of our other items, and I forget if it's B or C, but it's listed in, I think C, when we're looking at approving fiscal year adjustments. So, it's under item 7C.
Okay, great.
So, we could just discuss it under that item. I don't know if we could do that, or...
Well, I think we can. It's, well, we'll follow that item, so we can probably refer to it.
Move it to the end of the agenda through the chair. If that's...
Yep.
We will move that 5G to the end of the agenda. Any other comments or motions?
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of the consent calendar items 5A, B, C, D, E. I do not need to read the resolution. F and H.
I'll second that.
Christine?
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Gressili?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
And with that, we'll move on to item number six, which are reports to council. We have, do we have any tonight?
We have no additional reports to council this evening.
All right, great. Thank you very much, Mr. Royce. And then, we'll move on to item seven, new business, discussion of three-year revenue and expenditure forecasting the city for the city's general fund.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This evening, what we're hoping to do is to present you three reports on, under new business. Those three reports are designed to, one, outline the city's fiscal health, and I've characterized it here as the problem. The second is to talk about potential solutions after the initial report, 7A. 7B is a report on revenue options that Mr. Maltby will present to the city council. And the third is a report on the mid-year budget, which is the housekeeping task for this evening. So, just as a broad overview as to how we're hoping to approach the evening. With respect to the problem itself or the city's fiscal health, the components of that particular report will include the general budget overview for the city, some budget challenges that we see the city facing. We'd like to talk then a little bit about a revenue and expenditure forecast. If we take certain assumptions and project forward for a period of three years, what the city's financial health will look like. And then finally, with closure of the first report, to talk about what we believe is becoming what I'm referring to as the tipping point, and I'll explain that more fully as we get to that part of this report. We're happy to report, and we've shown this before, the mayor actually included it as part of the State of the City address, that the city's general fund budget is technically balanced. That's the good news. You'll find out throughout the evening that the city's fiscal health is on target generally with what we projected for this fiscal year. So, we do have a balanced budget. I say that it's balanced technically, though, because we have still some challenges that we haven't addressed within this budget that need to be addressed, I think, coming into the future. I should point out in this chart that, though you'll see that it's balanced in terms of $26 million on either side of the ledger, I want to point out, as Mr. Lewis pointed out in the State of the City, that property and sales tax, if you combine those two line items, is about $13 million, $13.8 million. Police and fire is $13.2, $13.3 million. Generally, all of the property and sales tax that's generated within the city of San Carlos is sufficient to pay for police and fire. Anything above and beyond that, your parks and recreation departments, your administrative functions, public works, planning and building, are paid for through miscellaneous other revenue sources, such as the transient occupancy tax or vehicle and lo monies, some capital transfer monies, which we'll talk about more specifically here in a minute, or fees and revenue that we're able to charge for services that we provide and that we're legitimately able to charge back for. But the vast majority, when people think in terms of, well, we pay property tax, or we pay sales tax, and we expect services in exchange for those taxes that we pay, 100%, virtually 100%, not even including overhead, of the sales and property tax goes to pay for police and fire in our community. The budget is technically balanced. There are a number of challenges. There are a number of things that we've talked about that are not included or not funded within that balanced budget. Some of them are immediate issues that we know about, some are issues that are going to be facing us in the very near future. You'll find that many of these, you don't have a legal obligation to fund them today. We would suggest to you that good prudent fiscal planning would suggest that we start to set money aside for these categories. And then certainly there are policy choices with respect to those kinds of programs that you hope to be able to fund. We've listed here, and we've simplified it as much as we possibly can. I mean, the particular line items, we've listed them as a series of $500,000 bullet points, and you'll find that they're very plus or minus as we get into the specifics of each of those line items. But what we want to point out is that we have significant programs or items that we think should be funded or that we should be setting monies aside for, that are very significant in terms of what their costs are and obligations that this community will face. And when you think in terms of revenue, which Jeff will talk about in a few minutes, you know, those $500,000 bullet points are not easily achieved in terms of the fiscal structure for the city of San Carlos and today's financial structure. And when I say that, for example, if you look at the entirety of Laurel Street, the entirety of that downtown corridor for the city of San Carlos, roughly generates about $500,000 in sales tax. And so, if we were able to replicate San Carlos Street, we could maybe pay for one of those bullet points. A traditional PowerPoint, or a traditional retail development that might include a large box retail, such as a Target store, with ancillary retail uses around it, that kind of a retail development might generate about $500,000. It takes multiple developments of that nature, if we're going to tackle this problem through an economic development mode, to be able to address all of the issues that we're putting before you tonight. So, that's the significance of why the presentation is as it is. The first item on the list is the Gatsby 45 requirement. You've heard a lot of talk throughout the last couple of years about retiree medical obligations. Currently, we pay as you go for those obligations. The difficulty is, as the employee age, as employees retire, that number grows, and it grows much faster than what you might expect. And so, we've actually had an actuarial study to determine what our retiree medical obligations are, and whereas we're currently paying approximately $300,000 to $400,000 in a pay-as-you-go for a set aside for the retiree medical obligation, actually, it's paying for the retiree medical obligation that we have for retired employees, that actuarial study shows that we ought to be putting aside about $900,000 in order to pay for that obligation as it expects to grow over years. And therefore, we should be setting aside that much more per year, reflecting that there is approximately a $500,000 per year expenditure that the city needs to start thinking about putting money aside for. The funding equipment replacement set aside, as you know, we have an equipment replacement plan. It actually is $600,000 and some thousand dollars, a bit more than what's reflected up there. We know what that number is, but we don't include it, and we don't budget for it in each year's fiscal year, fiscal budget. It's not included. When we show the $26 million, in my estimation, that number should be $26.6 million, so that we would be funding the equipment replacement fund, as it should be funded. We haven't done that because we didn't want to cut the extra five or six positions that would allow us to do that last year. And so, what we have done is we've, because cities generally are conservative in how they estimate revenues, and because we don't spend every dime that's in the budget, we just anticipate that we're going to have some money left at the end of the year. And on a $26 million budget, I would expect that if we're fiscally prudent, that we ought to be able to save $500,000 to $1 million every year, just because we're conservative on the revenue side and we're frugal on the expenditure side. But then we come to you at the end of each fiscal year. We did that again this last fiscal year, as you might recall, and we said, the first thing we want to fund is that equipment replacement fund, so we don't get behind in terms of our rolling stock in the equipment that we have. The new fire GPA, we've listed up there. As you know, the new formula is in place, is intact. The labor agreements will all kick in this year, but actually, this isn't speaking to that. As you might recall, the fire department, in adopting the budget this past year, recognized that with the new formula, that there was going to be an additional burden placed upon the city of San Carlos. The fire department tried to lessen that burden for us by doing a few things within its budget to minimize the impact to us. For example, they did not fund all of their positions at 100%. For example, they did not include, or they included two years of revenue this one time because they hadn't been billing for certain fire services in prior years, and it's a relatively large number. But there's two years of revenue this current year, which is reflected within the budget, but ongoing, that will only be one year's revenue each year moving forward. And then thirdly, there were some reserves used in order to pay for workers' comp premiums, which you can't do every year, obviously, because we're tapping into reserves. And so, that number reflects some adjustments that we're expecting, set aside labor agreements and with a formulate, that reflects another adjustment that we're expecting within that budget moving forward. Restoring police personnel, we've heard, had discussions over the last couple of years as we've reduced the police force by a number of different positions, five or six, depending upon your calculation. There were a couple of positions early on that were reflected within the budget but not fully funded. The traffic sergeant has been one of the recent positions that has been cut there, and there's been talk about trying to restore some of those positions as our budget might allow. We've listed again, that is a bullet point. If you really wanted to restore those officers, it would actually be more than $500,000, but we put that bullet point there. The general fund reserve allocation, and the mayor, I think, spoke very eloquently on that particular point, you know, as your budget grows from $15 million to $20 million to $26 million over the years, you'd like to have a consistent percentage of that budget set aside for an emergency reserve fund. And we haven't increased that reserve set aside, and so, the finance department would like to increase the reserve allocation by $500,000. The capital fund set aside of $1.3 million, historically, the city, in good times, we have an agreement with the SVWMA for the fact that that transfer station is within the city, generates approximately $1.3 million. The city historically had put that money into a capital set aside fund, so that we would have funds that would be able to assist the community with projects, whether it be the library, or the youth, the center, or street infrastructure, or parks. For the last number of years, we have not been able to put that money into the capital fund set aside, and we've been using it in the general fund to balance the budget. We'd like to be able to get to a point that we can put some monies back into the capital budget, so that we would have monies to keep the city's infrastructure in good repair. We've listed a number of additional things that we haven't put specific dollar values to for, you know, I think for fairly obvious reasons. One is that all of our labor contracts this year are up, and so, we will be renegotiating those labor contracts with all of our employees. We don't know what that number will be. We've listed the economic recession and state budget cuts. You know, we've been facing budget reductions in the city of San Carlos now for years, certainly many years before I arrived on the scene, two and a half years ago. We've made significant reductions since my arrival. The theory had always been that, well, we would use our reserves and we would tap into, for example, the capital fund set aside during the bad times. And then during the good times, we would start to accrue those monies again and set those aside for capital funds and the like. The problem is, is that during the last couple of years, which I think most of us would recognize were relatively good years, in terms of the overall fiscal health of the local economy as well as the state economy, we've been making budget cuts during the good times. And as we all know, we're taking now a downward cycle, and we don't expect to see property tax growing in future years, as we've seen them growing in the past year locally. We've been buttressed somewhat compared to certain parts of the state or the country, but we are starting to see the impacts and would expect certainly a flattening of the revenue in property as well as sales tax, if not an outright decline in those categories. But in addition to that, we truly expect impacts on the state budget problems. Those $16 billion or whatever the multi-billion dollar deficit is, as reported today, we know that there will be impacts. And the most recent indications are that they will defer capital monies that will be made available to us, and so, you know, there will be cash flow issues. Again, if we had capital money set aside, we'd be able to more easily cover those kinds of situations. But additionally, just in the last few days, we've heard that they may eliminate the COPS program, the grant funding that we get from any of the capital programs within our police department. And as you will recall, this past year, we actually restored one of the police officers that was previously cut through the use of COPS grant funding. Well, a reduction or a loss of that funding, which is currently perhaps on the platter, would jeopardize that position. Additionally, there are monies within our budget related to the education augmentation fund that are reimbursed to cities in San Mateo and Marin Counties, not everywhere throughout the state. It's a significant number, though. I think you can think of it in terms of another one of those half-million dollar bullet points that potentially could be in jeopardy. Even though we have certain protections because of Proposition 1A from years prior, to where if the state declares an emergency and takes additional funds from our regular property tax stream, they can only do that for three years, and then they have to repay us with interest. There are additional monies, this augmentation fund, reimbursement, for example, that may not have that same kind of protection. And I just want to alert that, alert you to that, we will start to pull it out and report it separately in our future property tax allocations. You will see projections that will show a decline in property tax. That's one of the reasons, is because that particular category is one that we really don't think we can, we can count on, and I can tell you that many cities are taking that money and only using it for one-time expenditures or for capital set asides. We have plugged it into our general operating budget because of the need to balance the budget and try to retain and maintain the services that we've currently been providing. And in addition to that, new program initiatives, you know, we've had a number of inquiries, requests for additional programs, whether they be green initiatives, whether they be youth and sports activities, pedestrian safety improvements, route to schools, traffic enforcement or additional traffic enforcement, transparency and additional reporting, making our reports even more accessible to the public, or the improvements to the telecast system that we currently have. I mean, all of these things are additionally, cost additional monies, and we haven't put a number as to what that might be. Those are policy decisions, but it's very difficult to consider any new initiative when you're... to consider any new initiative when you're struggling to actually balance the budget that you currently are working under just to maintain the current level of services that you're providing. The capital programs that are there, we list them in excess of 100 million dollars, it seems like an extraordinarily high number. The drainage improvements alone may be 45 to 50 million dollars if you truly wanted to do a comprehensive drainage improvement plan. The parks projects were going through a parks master plan. Given the requests that we've had and the creativity in some of those requests, that alone could exceed 100 million dollars in terms of a wish list, streets, buildings and facilities. I should mention, City Hall and many of the public buildings and facilities that the city has, we're not putting monies into a sinking fund to replace these buildings. They're aging, the infrastructure in terms of your building stock is aging, and we're not putting monies aside to replace that building stock for the future. We should be. I think, you know, I'm happy to report that our streets, our sewer system, not the main plant, mind you, but the lines in San Carlos, I think are in fairly good repair, in fairly good order. And I think that's a credit to this city and to the public works department in terms of using the monies that we've established frugally for that purpose. But the buildings and the physical structure, I think, is another matter, and we should start setting some monies aside for those in the future. That's a fairly gloomy outlook, and we're not done yet.
There's more.
We actually, that's the situation in terms of what we're able to set aside, I think, for the future. The problem is, is though our current budget, moving forward even for next year, doesn't provide sufficient funds to maintain the current level of service, set aside those 500,000 dollar bullet points, and I think, as you'll see, that problem we expect, given the assumptions that we've made, and there's good reasoning behind those assumptions, is going to get worse unless we take corrective action. The city's administrative services staff, Jeff Maltby, Rebecca Minden Hall, have been working on forecasting for the city, not only for this current year as well as for next year, but looking out for two or three years. Frank Svetosek is with the Rosinell Svetosek Group. Frank has been working with us on some redevelopment projects, the redevelopment plan, but he also has a lot of expertise in terms of just economic analysis and the like, and has worked with a number of cities throughout the state. So we've asked him to take a look at our revenue forecasts, just to get another eye to review that data and to help us make those projections consistent with what the state budget impact might look like. So with that, I'd like to introduce Frank, and then I'd like to come up and make just a few closing remarks on the current budget situation before talking about revenue options. So with that, if I could introduce Frank Svetosek.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be back with you this evening. What I want to focus on is historical and projected or forecasted revenues. And what we have done is we've taken the chart that's in the staff report and the staff documents and basically bifurcated it between what has occurred since 2003 and then what we forecast will occur moving forward from this fiscal year on. And really would like to focus in on looking at revenues and expenditures. From 2003 to 2007, your annual revenues increased by approximately 9.2% on average per annum. That was a pretty healthy increase as we look going forward. A lot of that was due to the health and the economy, a lot of that was due to increases in sales tax and property tax revenue, and the fact that the state of California could afford to provide additional revenue to cities based upon the good aspects and economic growth that they were experiencing. When we look at our expenditure for that same period of time, those grew on average by roughly 4.6%. So we are in a pretty healthy situation. The expenditure growth was curtailed, however, due to staff reductions or not filling staff positions, as well as having the city hold back on operating expenses. And we look through that time, and where we start focusing in is basically on the net change in fund balance. That's showing what we have in terms of our total revenues versus our expenditures. If I may, this column right here, it also unfolds in an unappropriated fund balance column, although right down here. As we look on a historical basis, basically, every year except 2003 and 2007, the city's expenditures exceeded their revenues. And so what was occurring then is that in the unappropriate fund balance, every year, monies were transferred out of that in order to balance the budget. In addition, monies were transferred in from the city's redevelopment agency in order to pay a greater share of costs associated with operations. And again, even through the good times, we were having challenges trying to figure out how to balance the budget. As we move forward then, I worked with your staff and Mark to look at forecast assumptions. And given some of the news that's coming out today, these may be considered rosy outlooks, but basically, as we move forward and look at the forecasted revenues versus expenditures, we use these assumptions. First off, the property tax, which funds a great share of your general fund, would increase roughly at 3.1% per annum. That's both a forecasting tool that's used in the business, 3% is considered a good measure to accommodate the highs and lows, and as well as tracks with some of the historical increases over time here in San Carlos. Sales tax, we've counted in both the addition of the San Carlos marketplace and looked at sales tax receipts growing at roughly 3% a year and other revenues at 2%. We certainly could lower those numbers, but if we do so, then you'd probably throw us all here out of the room. If we look at salaries and benefits, we looked at the current labor agreements as it pertains to fire and then anticipated labor agreements that may be coming forth as you enter into your negotiations. And those, we grew at roughly 5% to 7% per annum, depending on the particular type of contract. Operating expenditures at 3% to 3.8%, and then fire services, we had a 500,000 dollar additional increase for the next fiscal year and then grow it at 5% thereafter. Basically, the numbers tell a story that looks at this chart. The bottom line indicates the expenses as they go up, or excuse me, the top line indicates the expenses, and the bottom line shows our revenues. And what we see is a widening gap or deficit between our revenues and expenses. How that translates into numbers is basically what we see on this slide. If we look forward and the forecasted is what is forecasted to be the year-end, June 30th, total revenues and total expenditures for the city of San Carlos. In essence, we look like we will bring in roughly 24.4 million dollars worth of revenue. We will have 25 million dollars worth of expenditures. Part of that will be offset by transfers in of roughly 3.3 million dollars. And bottom line, we'll end the year with a fund balance of roughly a half a million dollars. What's good is that if we go down to that row there of unappropriated fund balance, being funds that could be used that are not restricted for any other purpose, being emergency reserve, cash flow reserve, or special restrictions, we have 4.4 million dollars available that can be used to plug any particular gap. But let's move forward, and again, we use the revenue and expenditure growth forecasts that I've said before, and if we look at going forward, based upon these assumptions, our revenues are growing at roughly 1.8% per annum. Our expenditures are growing at roughly 5.9% per annum. And what starts to occur is that we start to hit in terms of year-end fund balances a growing deficit. What is probably the most pointed of this analysis is looking at the unappropriated fund balance. Basically, in order to cover the deficit, we need to then start dipping into this fund balance in order to pay our obligations. And by fiscal year 2010-11, or 11-12, excuse me, we're down to 3/4 of a million dollars in our unappropriated fund balance. At some point after that, we go down to zero. Certainly, there could be one-time savings again that will come forth, but that could be offset by the fact that we're using a 3% basically growth projection for our revenues during this period. So what we're pointing out here is that we have a challenge that we need to somehow address. Fortunately, you're not alone. A lot of my client agencies are looking at the same type of challenge. Unfortunately, we're in a situation where we need to come up with strategies that are outside the box. We talked about economic development here many times, and that will certainly take us part of the way to get there. But we need to look at other strategies, or else, given what my understanding is of your service levels, they will have to be reduced significantly.
Mr. Myers. That's just a graphic depiction of our reserves. The tipping point, you know, every year, it seems like I get up and I talk about how bad the budget is. And, you know, I've been doing this for a number of years now, and you've heard it for years before I got here. And so what's different? And, you know, so I try to figure out, in presenting this report or talking in terms of where we are today and what we need to do towards moving into the future, of, you know, how do you explain what's different? Because we really do feel, at the staff level, that it's different this year. And we've talked, I think, last year, we knew this was coming, and so we've talked about it, we've presented reports to the council. And then, over the holidays, I read a book, actually, an audio book, called The Tipping Point by a fellow, Malcolm Gladwell, remember the name Gladwell, because it's a very uplifting book, as you might expect. He talks about, it's a treatise on social epidemics, if you will, and how small changes by small influential people build quickly as if it were an epidemic, and that the change comes quickly. But that it's a number of small changes over time that changes the landscape in a radical way. And then he talks and gives specific examples, anything ranging from how Sesame Street came around and children's programming to hush puppies and the marketing campaign and how those shoes made a comeback, believe it or not, a few years back, and crime in New York, how a number of different small programs were instituted by the police department and other departments there that, and starting with graffiti and starting with just little things in terms of making sure that people didn't violate access to public transportation and the like and prosecuting even for those very small offenses, and changing kind of the culture that led to a decrease in crime in New York City. Talked about the American Revolution and how a number of different small steps transpired quickly into what became the American Revolution. And, you know, so, but you give a, you know, very positive uplifting book like that to the city manager type, and they start to think, well, you know, but it's not all that rosy, is it? And how does the tipping point come into something like the situation that we're in now? And it's like, well, okay, you know, the positive and the rosy outlook for the American Revolution and the American colonists at the time, well, the British were on the scene at that point, too. And they might not have looked at it quite as rosyly as did the colonists and the like because those same changes were transpiring slowly and gradually, and got to a point that there was a tipping point and there was a dramatic change that affected someone negatively at the same time that it affected others positively. And that got me to thinking in terms of, well, you look at what the city of San Carlos has done for the last five, 10 years, in terms of, you know, every year, we make cutbacks in commodities and operations, and we've done that in terms of 5% to 10% used before for the last five to plus years. When we needed to balance the budget or to ensure that we didn't exhaust our reserves, we made small incremental cuts each and every year. And we've done that almost as if it's part of the routine and part of the norm. We've made wholesale reorganizations and realized significant efficiencies by doing that, but those reorganizations have been accomplished in administration, in community development, even in the police department with some of the outsourcing of activities there. It's, you know, it's part of a reorganization, part of a realization of increased efficiencies through those reorganizations that have been accomplished over the years. Those changes and improvements have been done. We've made significant cuts in staff and programs. We tried to do it in terms of not reducing core services to the community, but, you know, today, we're authorized at a FTE level, a full-time equivalent level, of 113.8 employees. That's down from 126 in 2001, or as recently as 2001. I'm currently holding five positions vacant in the city. So effectively, we're at an authorized level of 108 compared to 126 five or six years ago. And as you've seen, the reductions that have been proposed in recent years, we were still able to offer up some operations and commodities, some part-time fundings, we've been able to close the youth center for a day to save some additional monies, and technically make ends meet by presenting you with a balanced budget, albeit not addressing some of the major things that we think are outstanding. But there has been a steady erosion of programs, services, and monies that are there to offset any kind of emergency that might transpire in the upcoming year or two. The difficulty in why I can, I think I can refer to this as a tipping point now, is that you won't see small commodities in next year's budget reductions package because they're not there to offer anymore. You will see positions. You will see significant positions that will affect significant programs. I've already asked the Parks and Recreation Department, for example, to look at merging or reorganizing there from four divisions to three, just assuming that the two recreation positions are, will not be funded next year, given the outlook of what I see currently on the horizon. Certainly, there are policy choices for the city council to make, and you can redirect that at any given time. But the five positions that we're currently holding vacant and not advertising, I mean, we've got a hiring freeze in place, include two in administration, the financial services manager, which is a high-level manager position, the systems analyst, the two recreation positions, one of which has been held vacant for the entire year, and then an administrative clerk position that is actually in-building, that we're backbuilding and trying to figure out a new structure for the upcoming year. But we've taken those steps in the immediate timeframe to try and soften the blow and give us additional flexibility for the upcoming year, but we see more significant programs and additional suggestions for reductions along those same lines, just to make ends meet, to make up that 800,000 dollars to 1.8 million dollar differential that Frank's talking about, even before we start to address the capital needs of the community or the retirement set aside for the community or restoring police officers or addressing any of the new programs that people in this community sincerely want. I guess that concludes my report. And that sets the stage for what we want to talk about next in terms of revenue options. But staff, if you to answer any questions that you might have about the initial report in terms of the setup, Frank, Jeff, myself, other members of staff, if you have any questions on the first report, we'd be happy to address those now.
With council's permission, there's a lot of information in the report that we received, a lot of information tonight, maybe we can ask some of the questions about the information that we've gotten, and then we have one public comment speaker, and then maybe we can have a discussion after that. How's that sound? Okay. We'll start down on this end, please.
Yes, I have a question, excuse me, regarding, a couple of questions. The assumption of the 500,000 for restoring police officers, I understand that's a round number, so.
Yes.
Fair enough. But how many positions are you making the assumption of? I heard in your comments, five to six.
Well, roughly two, two and a half, maybe three, depending upon the level of the position. If you're talking to traffic sergeant and then you provide the car and the like, and you're talking 200,000 dollars plus for that kind of a position, so we're talking two to three positions could be restored at that level.
Okay. And then, when I'm looking at the revenues expenditures, three-year forecast, so I'm looking, I'm looking at sales tax, maybe I'm looking in the wrong place, but as I follow the sales tax across, I'm looking for a significant jump. the sales tax across, I'm looking for a significant jump, and all I'm seeing is a gradual increase. And the reason I'm looking for a significant jump is because I'm looking for the PAMF number. And I understand this first year, it's pretty low, but aren't we talking about some $600,000 to $700,000 jump at some point?
Yes. I mean, initially, we projected $250,000 for next year, $250,000 the year after, and then it goes up to $780,000 in the third year.
It's in the chart. There's a line item that's called PAMF Project on page five.
Okay. I see it right there. It's special line item.
To that question, why would it reflect $630,000? Isn't it a floor of $780,000?
It's $780,000, that includes two components, yes.
Gotcha. Thank you, excuse me.
So, yeah, well, then the follow-up on that, where's the other 150?
I don't know.
Basically, the way it works, basically, the way it works is the sales tax is guaranteed. So we're showing the first amount of the sales, guaranteed sales tax under the sales tax column, and then the balance under PAMF Project. So you add the two together.
So it's hidden, that part of it is hidden in the sales tax column?
It's included, yes.
We prefer not to say hidden, but it's included.
Sure, okay.
I will also indicate that the marketplace, you know, we projected that that project would generate an additional $300,000 in its entirety additionally. 150 of that was already included in this year's projection, and so there's an additional 150 added into next year's projection.
Okay. And then, struggling a little bit with just underreaching the tipping point, when we have 126 full-time employees in 2001, and just a sort of an editorial comment, to me, that's a high. I mean, we all look at 2001 as, you know, the bubble bursting and so forth. But how do we, when we give figures like this, when we look at figures like this, I'm trying to, what's the right word, equate something, because, for instance, let's take dispatch. Sure, we outsourced it to Menlo Park. It still has to count somehow, like, for an employee, even though they don't work for us, it equates to something.
Right.
And so we still have somebody working for us who we are paying. Do you follow me?
Yes, I do, perfectly. I mean, that goes both ways. I mean, as we, for example, have cut back Neil Martin contract, and we've hired a couple of full-time employees in planning, as we've hired an assistant public works director, city engineer, to plan for the eventual transition there, those three additional positions are included in the FTE side. But you're absolutely right, there are, we have outsourced dispatch, which I believe the seven positions, that are, you know, come off the FTE list, and yet we're still paying for dispatch services. Now, from our standpoint, we would throw that up as being one of the things that we've done in terms of reorganizing and becoming more efficient. Certainly, you know, there were concerns, I think, as we were going through that, we wanted to ensure that the same level of service was being provided moving forward as what had been provided previously. And I think that's worked out well to this point. It's one of the things that we've done in terms of trying to address the economic stresses that this community has been under.
Okay. I hear you. I don't see a solution for us, because we're really not at 100 and, we are at 108 actual, as you said, because we're short still even five. But somehow, we need to account for the fact that, yeah, you can take kudos for, you know, shifting things around, but we still need to account for whether it's an employee or it's somebody we're outsourcing to, we're paying for a dispatch position, and maybe the outsourcing equates to 2.5 full-time employees. I don't know.
And I'm not trying to get into a discussion of the details of it. What I'm doing is saying, we've gone from 126 to 108. And yes, there have been some areas where we've outsourced, and there have been other areas where we've done just the opposite, that we've hired employees as opposed to using contracts.
Okay.
I think, you know, given the two examples that I've given you, you could adjust that by four.
Okay. And then, a question I have is, I'm looking at the difference between the page we were just looking at, reaching the tipping point, and it has the thing about the employees, and I'm looking at the other chart, which is titled, where is it? Excuse me while I shuffle through here. Oh, okay. Forecast assumptions. And in forecast assumptions, when I look at that, I see property tax, 3.1, sales tax 3 percent, other 2 percent. Those are increases. Then I see, on the expenditure side, looks like operating expenditures pretty much are in line with the revenue increases, running between 3 and 3.8 percent. The thing that jumps out to me as being high is our salaries and benefits. They are not staying, as revenues are increasing, that particular item is increasing at a greater rate. I have to ask myself why. I have to ask our council members why. I'm one of the ones that agree to those kinds of things. But what's interesting to me, and maybe you could answer this, is if it's 5 to 7 percent for that group, yet that group is reduced in numbers, it must mean that the salaries and benefits individually are increasing greater than 5 to 7 percent, because there's fewer people.
Yeah, but you have to keep in mind, there's a new base every year. So when we're talking 5 or 7 percent, it's increased over that new base, whatever it might be.
It's like compounded interest.
Exactly. And additionally, I would, you know, some of this, you know, we're not, we're not perfect at this either. We're trying to forecast, and we're using historical data as best we can. We're not alone, as Frank mentioned. I just got an email today from another city manager indicating that they've done their analysis, they're at eight-plus percent, public safety being the highest, but even the non-public safety were rising at 5 and 6 percent, where the revenue side was only reflecting 3 or 4 percent. I mean, that seems to be what's happening in the market. It's a product not only of base salaries, but it's also a product of the benefits. The purse rates have been going up, medical increases have been going up, the retirement benefits have been going up. And then, in some cases, we know, because of the one existing contract that we do have is with fire, and that's projected between 5 and 6 percent base salary for the next three years.
So, again, to that point, the benefits component of salaries and benefits, is that the greater proportion of those 5 to 7 percent increases?
I mean, yes. It, you know, it adds to, so even the base increase, and I was at a, we work with IEDA to negotiate many of our contracts, and we represent, we're on the board of that particular organization, and they will talk, not, you know, not just here, but just globally, that in the public sector, when you're talking about a 3 or 4 percent, given the current status of benefits, that you're really talking 5, 6, 7 percent for that 3 or 4 percent, just because of recent trends with respect to the purse numbers, which have gone, you know, from 0 percent to 38 percent in public safety. 38 percent of the base salary goes towards, that's not retiree medical, that's the pension plan. And, you know, so when you start to talk about health benefits and the, you know, all of the array of benefits that go towards employees, the factor can be 50 or 60 or higher percent from the base salary to pay for the entire compensation package for that employee.
If I may, for the layman, what that means is, for every dollar we pay an employee, we have to add on 38 cents to go towards their retiree benefits.
And we've heard, you know, two or three years ago, that the purse fund is making a comeback, their investments were doing really well. Well, I suspect this last year, they're not doing as well as what they were.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or clarifications?
Okay.
None at this time.
Okay, great. Councilmember Weiss?
I just had one. There was a point in the report that described an ERAF rebate. Could you speak to that just a little bit? And is this going to be, should we expect this as a one-time, woo-hoo, we got something, and we're never going to see it again, or?
Well, you know, in my perfect conservative world, we would think of that money as one-time money, $630,000. We've been getting it the past few years, ever since this county and Marin County have decided to rebate those funds to cities within those two counties. Not every county is handling it the same way, and we don't know that those monies are protected the same as our regular property tax stream. And so, we don't believe it's quite as secure as our regular property tax stream. It is a significant amount of money for this city. We currently count on it as part of our regular operating budget revenue stream. I'd like to get away from that and start to put that money aside for either capital purposes, or even in a better world, a one-time expenditures of some nature. But, you know, that's 600 and some thousand dollars in addition to the current issue that we have.
Hi, Mr. Griselli.
No, I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
I have just a couple in the, sorry, I think it's in the five-year forecast that we were given in our report. It's the chart that shows years 2003 through fiscal year 2011. Under the property tax, our property tax projection for 2006, or, excuse me, actual for 2007 was 6,644,000. And then, it drops down for fiscal year 2008. It looks like it's, that's an anomaly. Can you explain why?
Well, I'm going to speculate that that may be because of that $630,000 number, but I'll defer to Jeff, and Rebecca, if they have a ready answer.
So from 2007, 2008, our property tax actually goes down from 6.64 to 6.52. My.
Can you just help me hone in on the right slide? Are you looking at the historical slide or the forecast?
No, looking at the slide, looking at the report that we got.
Okay, the staff report.
Staff report.
Just a second.
It's partly, I'm asking that question because we're also then projecting out from that point forward.
Right. So, in terms, and which year, again?
So, actual 2007 was 6.64 under property tax, and forecasted 2008 right now, 6.52, which goes down, which would be the first time it's happened in recent history. I'm just wondering why that is.
You know, there's a number of reasons why we do that, some of which has to do with the fact that we have an airport in town, and in any given year, depending on the aircraft that's parked at the airport, if they're housed there permanently, they become, I believe it's unsecured property tax.
I see.
And so we had had, actually, a pretty significant year, not typical to that. In addition, I think there was, if I'm not mistaken, there was some property that came off the rolls, or was contested to a lower rate as well that we were aware of.
Okay. That's sufficient. I just want to be sure that as we forecast going forward, we're forecasting this always going up, and yet, here's a year where it didn't go up. Just gave me a little concern as, you know, like, forecast, I know it's not perfect science, but it's stretched the imagination, but I was just wondering why this year was an anomaly. Right. And then, the other, in both the presentation, three-year forecast, as well as what was in our report, in 2009 through 11, our expenditures jump up significantly. I think forecast goes from $25.3 million to $27.7, and then starts to gradually go up again after that point. Why the jump from 2008 to 2009 on expenditures?
Jeff, you?
Yeah, you know, part of that is the salary and benefits projections. And one of the reasons in last year and this year that they start to go up higher, if you recall, if you're familiar with the MOUs, we have four-year contracts with the majority of the city. The first several years of those contracts, there were 0 percent increases for employees in, and they receive for that the retirement benefit, but they help pay for it by having zero. So that's helping ramp up the costs. And one of the things you also see as you project into the future is you see all the costs in their raw nature. You know, the last couple of years, you would have seen the same kind of numbers, but when you actually adopted the budget, you cut the budget. So you lop, you pruned it. And you haven't pruned those years yet. So as you prune them, they'll come back down and end up ultimately being that lower level that looks more in line.
I understand. Thank you very much. And then, my final question is, and I don't know if it's reflected in this, but I know in the conversation with the city manager, you also mentioned something to me that's a little bit of a concern, and that is, you know, the 1 percent property tax of which we get 11 percent. The margin of, as homes turn over, the margin difference in the property tax that we get is reducing all the time as houses get sold and resold. And so it seems like that's a declining number over time, the property tax, as, so, are those factored into these reports, because, into this sort of 3 percent? In other words, to me, that's, that, as that starts to swap, going from whatever percentage it is now, you know, it's going to get lower and lower over time, and I think that's a problem.
You know, but you, how much in-depth we've gone with that kind of an analysis? I mean, I don't think we have, in all honesty. I mean, we're looking at 3 percent as being, you know, appropriately conservative, because under normal growth, the property can go up 2 percent. Where you get into trouble, I think, is if people start requesting reassessments, because values significantly drop in a community. Some communities are already finding that to be the case. We've seen that here in the Bay Area back in the 89 to 92 timeframe. That hasn't been much of an issue yet today in San Carlos. But you're right. I mean, as fewer and fewer homes, you know, if you've had a fairly stable community, and people have owned those homes for 40 years, and that World War II-era home now is being sold, we've been experiencing significant reassessments and increases in our property tax stream because of those sales. Those will slow down over time, we think, just because of the nature of the changes in our demographic makeup. But then, secondly, as homes are now being reassessed to a different value, we won't see the same kind of increases that we have historically.
So, and I didn't mean to put you on the spot with that, as far as what that number might be, but I think that's actually a really critical criteria, and maybe as we move forward, to take a look at what that trend is, and the percentage of homes in towns that have turned over. I think that's actually something.
The other thing that I should mention is that we also have a real estate transfer tax, which as fewer and fewer homes, because of the market, as that market declines, that transfer tax income will decline as well.
If I may just add a little bit on that point, we work with HDL, who helps provide us with our sales tax and property tax forecasts, and one of the real benefits of working with a company that specializes and works, you know, throughout the state with other agencies on those specific issues, is we actually do get that analysis from them twice a year on our property tax. It does go into that detail. And we can see over the last several years, the actual number of sales of properties in San Carlos diminishing over the last few years, and sort of, you can almost predict this, and now in the last year, it's a, you know, all of a sudden, the floor comes out, because it, again, reaches a tipping point where the market itself has changed in nature. But we do get that information, and that is a factor that, you know, has caused this year's property tax or next year's property tax projection to be significantly different than what last year's was.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Maltby. So if council has no more questions on the information presented to council from staff, then why don't we take a public comment, real quick, before discussion?
Thank you.
And we have one public speaker comment from Pat Bell.
Pat Bell, San Carlos. You all know that I feel very strongly that public safety has to be our top priority. And I've heard a lot of talk about the high cost of fire and the high cost of retirement benefits and so forth. And we have to remember that we're coming out of a deep hole in the fire department, where we didn't set aside money to meet the needs. And when purse wasn't charging us anything, we just assumed they were never going to charge us anything. We didn't put any money aside. Mr. Weiss is now talking about the same thing with the city, that we need to put aside money to, for replacement vehicles and so forth. And I remember during those long meetings of the Fire Board, Mr. Griselli talking about, that's the way you run a business. You don't just assume that somebody's going to give you new vehicles when you need them. You've got to start setting this money aside, so that when it's time to buy that vehicle, you have the money. So, it sounds like we've been eating our carrots and broccoli, and we're going to be eating okra soon, so I hope you have some brilliant idea to solve this problem. But I urge you not to cut public safety, you know, that, and I'm concerned about the other services, too. As Mark said, the easy cuts have already been made. You know, he has reorganized the city, and he's pulled the belt really tight. And I hear people say, well, we have to cut the cost of government. I don't know where you're going to cut it anymore, and still get all these wonderful things that we all assume we deserve in San Carlos. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, council, this is information and discussion items, so, council, discussion?
I'd like to segue off of Pat's comments and no
I'd like to segue off of Pat's comments and no disrespect to HARP, but while public safety is important, I don't think any of us want to flush our toilets and find out that they don't work, turn on our water, find out it comes out orange, or put our trash out and find out no one picked it up on Monday morning. So there are other important services as well and that's what we're here to do is try and balance all those things. I have more comments when I suppose when we get to talking about tax increases and so forth, but I do have some comments I would like to add to try and provide, you know, we've heard from staff and so forth and sort of the government side of it. I'd like to speak a little bit to the other side of it, which is what I feel like I'm elected to represent and that's the average homeowner and business owner in town. I think when we look at the revenues and so forth, we have to be careful to also consider those around us and where we're getting this money from when we talk about taxing and so forth. And if you look at the housing stock around town, you don't see a lot of stuff that's brand new. There's some, of course, people remodel and build and whatnot, but there's still a lot of old housing stock and you can tell people are on a budget when they keep care of their homes and so forth. So I think we have to balance that, look at, you know, when we talk about spending money on city properties and improving them, which we should do, you still have to look around at the businesses. There's a lot of old businesses, business buildings and so forth and a lot of older homes that, you know, you can tell people are on a budget and they have to be careful on how they improve those and so forth. And I think we also have to consider the residents and the businesses in terms of the kind of income and the revenue that they have and everybody's on a budget. That's why you see, you know, I think when you see the 2% to 3% increase, that's what's going on in the real world and I think government has to tighten its belt when necessary and live according to the environment it's in and not expect to be increasing at leaps and bounds when everything else is not. And then the last comment I'll make in regards to that is when I was out doing the tours this weekend with BPAC, we drove around in vans all over the county and had a lot of opportunity to speak to other elected officials. And I think one of the things that my take on it from talking to other elected officials that we're recognizing from city to city is something that former council member Doherty talked about. We play this game of laddering up because, you know, one city will increase salaries and benefits and so forth for whatever group it is, whether it's management or public safety or whatever, and that raises the ladder over here, the bar over here, and then another city will, and we all keep going up and up and up. And from talking to these folks, what we're starting to recognize is we can't necessarily just look at each other and say, well, they raised it 5% and they raised it 2% over here and 6% over there and so we're going to raise. Let's start looking at what our income is. What's our revenue and what's realistic and what can our community afford and not just look at each other and say, well, they're raising over there, so we're going to raise over here. And I think once all the cities start to recognize that, you know, there's a limit to, the other side of the tipping point is those who pay. And when we start to recognize what their tolerance is, I think when we sit in labor negotiations, which are closed-door sessions, and we negotiate contracts, I think we need to start looking at these numbers and consider what our revenue is before we start giving away 5%, 10%, you know, 5% to 7% increases in salary and benefits.
Other comments? Please.
I'd like to go back. I think Mark made the comment, there are good times and there are bad times. I'd like to call it changing times. If I take us up to 30,000 feet, it's very simple. We have revenues that are going up and not just this year. I mean, this is kind of a trend now, multi-year about 3% and expenses are going up 6%. I've done a lot of budgeting for companies and startups and there's generally about six percentage points difference between your headcount in a service or organization and about 85% of our cost are people-oriented FTE-related expenses. And so basically what that six points means that if you were to hire no one, no growth in headcount, your expenses would still grow 6%. And so if we are growing at 3%, what's affordable is minus 3% with people. I'm not recommending that we lay off people, but it's just a mathematical financial tool. But Matt used a word I think is really important, it's affordable. And being only on the council two months and having a lot of financial data, which I just love to work with, I feel really responsible. It is changing times. This has been going on now, or the messages have been there for two or three or four years. We're not going to get more money from the state. We're not going to see significant growth in sales tax on our east side for at least five or six or seven years. We really need to do a good job and manage affordability within our city. I'm very much for, this is more budgeting, we'll get into that in two or three months, but very much supportive of treating our people, paying them right, giving them the best benefits. But we also need to look at business models. We need to look at subcontractions, consolidations. We need to look at people counseling. And the next topic on the agenda is the revenue side, but I don't want to forget, I want to also talk about the expense side. And so actually Matt also brought up this whole FTE. I get very confused. I've looked at reports and I've talked to Mark about this. When it comes time to budget, I really want to see organization charts and a true picture of apples of FTE. And FTE to me is dispatch. If it's subcontracted, what is the full-time equivalency headcount of that cost of that function? And if we manage headcount, we'll manage our bottom line. So I'm excited about working on this. To get back on a positive note, we have the highest standard of living in San Carlos. We have our health, we have great weather, we have good food, but we need to be very careful on management decisions that are being made now to navigate us over the next four to five years. It's going to be critical.
Okay.
I would commend our city manager. He's basically made a size 10 foot sit and get into a size eight shoe and our foot's growing. So this is going to get increasingly uncomfortable. Two things to look at, we've got revenue, we've got cuts. I mean, one way to budget, I mean, we can do everything from the very draconian, which, you know, I think we could kill Parks and Rec. I mean, that'll balance it. We can cut our police by a third. We can cut half of fire. Actually, we can't because we're in a JPA. Transit-oriented taxes could increase by 400%. Royal Street Downtown could increase their sales tax revenue by 600%. Overall, sales taxes could go up by about 60%. Or we could do just an across-the-board 13% cut. I am completely confident in the state government and the federal government looking at us as where the buck will actually stop and we are going to face additional mandates and additional calls for service and other stuff that they will not fund. So to some extent, I think we need to look forward and recognize there are expenditures that we will not be able to anticipate that will come from Sacramento. Not looking forward to that. I would echo Councilman Royce's thoughts of making a human-readable budget should be a high priority for the council. And I don't know, as we start to lead up to budget season, if there are public workshops for the budget to go through it and explain what things are, but I would like to put that forward to the council and say, open house budget workshops where, you know, maybe we'll go to the Intel Community Center, maybe we'll go to a number of other locations and say, here is what the budget is, here's where we're spending money. And I think tonight we saw a great deal of community desire to volunteer and put best thoughts forward. Let's enroll the community and say, we're facing a tough decision of how do we raise revenue or how do we cut? And let's get all brains on board and get ready for a good hard budget work.
I'd like to speak to the point of bringing back to bodies and people and whatever. I sit on the sewer board and we have a JPA joint powers agreement with Belmont, Redwood City and Menlo Park, Atherton, some of the cities down in that area. Many of the employees that are working there are within, I think we had a percentage of 80% are within five years, 10 years for sure of retirement and approximately 50% are within five years. And that's just a microcosm. I don't think necessarily our city has that high a percentage, but I bet if you put just John Smith, and I'm not looking to find out how old everybody is, but if you just put a blank name on this side and said, we have employees that are 28 years old, 38 years old, 40, I would think you'd find that a lot of them are on the long end and they're going to not be here necessarily 10 years from now. And we look at this budget situation, that's one point. The second point is when we say salaries and benefits, and to me, benefits is the big number. A lot of these benefits are, as Councilman Grocock can speak to with PERS, they're already there in the budget. We're not going to be changing a lot of the people who work here now. We're not going to say, we're going to slash your benefits. Now, that doesn't say that we can't say, but those people starting January 1st, 2009, you're going to have a different perspective. We did that in the fire, which was revolutionary to do it in the fire JPA. And the fire folks, the union worked with us and we got a good agreement there. We're not going to see the benefit of that next year or the year after. We see minimal, minimal benefit. In the long run, it's going to be beneficial. And I think that's the other thing we have to look at. If we think that, as you mentioned earlier about the laddering, the laddering, then we make a stand and we say, okay, fine, everybody gets the benefits they have. We're not going to sit here and grab away, but we've got to look at perhaps mitigating some of that situation. Having said that, we may be on the cutting edge. We may be the only one. We may be the, we may catch a lot of flak, but we're going to have to look at it. And that's, but again, realizing that in the short run, it's going to be less beneficial than in the long run. In the short run, we have got to, you could, you know, do all the cuts or whatever that you want to. I don't think in the short run, this is going to solve it, no matter how many FTEs, what do you want to call it. We've got to figure out a way to increase our revenue some way because if we don't in the short run, we're never going to make it. In the long run, I think we have to speak to these other issues that were spoken earlier.
Again, from my, just tying onto the benefits discussion, because I think one of the scariest things is the benefits aspect of this and to a certain extent where in my discussion with the city manager, there's also, you know, Bob, if San Carlos becomes sort of a lost leader and starting some...
There's a gamble there.
There's some gambling competitiveness in the region. There's a lot of small cities, a lot of competition for the same work. So when there's laddering of salaries, which I agree, it's, the first year I was on council, it felt like we made adjustments. And then the second year on council, it was like, hey, look, we have to make adjustments again. And I suspect this year, we're going to have to make adjustments. And it seems like we've got a little bit of like the baseball owner situation where everybody's sort of saying publicly, we need some sort of fiscal responsibility, but then again, if it comes down to your traffic sergeant or my traffic sergeant, you know, I can give him a, him or her a few more bucks to come over here. I think that we're at a, you know, competitive situation that doesn't work to everybody's benefit sometimes. So I do think that it worries me a little bit. I think what you guys did in the fire GPA is probably something we need to start to consider, which is a grandfathering of benefits and then looking at things going forward, whether or not this is a sustainable model that we've got and that the whole, the county has or for that matter, the whole region has. I don't know that it is. In private industry, it's been a difficult challenge and I think we're at a point where we have to take a hard look at as well for those of us in government. That being said, the information we got, I'm really, you know, as you guys may have heard when I had said the speech this week, what one of the other worries I have is the capital fund, using the capital fund monies to balance the budget. You know, you can talk about headcount cuts and salaries and stuff like that, but take $1.3 million and that's what, 5% of the budget? And we're using that to balance it, which means that a lot of the improvements that we have to do over time are just difficult to get to. And it's, you know, the city's at a place where I think we need that money in order to continue to provide the foundation of renewing and doing capital projects that are good for everybody in the city. Also, new programs and initiatives. We all talk about this on the council on a regular basis. I think there's a lot of things that we get excited about, we want to do. Whether or not there's kind of a corresponding initiative program that we can take off the table in order to put a new one on, that's certainly some of the things that we have to talk about, given the financial situation. There also may be some new initiatives that we think are of enough value that we want to get them done and therefore we need to look to revenue to help us get those things done. Ultimately, it's always a balance of both, isn't it? You have to do some cuts and be really tight in fiscal over here and the other hand, say, what can we do on the revenue side? Where do we compare with other cities as far as where revenue's coming from? And I think that that's part of our next discussion as well. So with that, if there's no other discussion or comments at this time, we probably will want to move on to item 7B.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Jeff Malby, Administrative Services Director for the city. I really appreciate the discussion you've had so far tonight. Can tell that you've spent a lot of time reading these reports and considering them carefully. You know, just to build a little bit on the mayor's state of the city, you know, the last item really in terms of eating your vegetables was kind of the venue in which we're going to eat those vegetables and the reasons why we're going to eat those vegetables. This particular report is really more like selecting the vegetables, considering how we could prepare those vegetables, sort of getting ready. There's a couple of specific purposes, goals to this particular staff report. The first is just to explain some of the alternatives that the council has available to them in dealing with revenue and the various methodologies of how it works with the city. Specifically, there is a staff recommendation asking council to direct staff to go out and begin an RFP, begin to look for a consultant that could help the city and the council look more in-depth at a utility user tax in this community. Nothing in this item commits the council in any way other than spending some staff time to begin to put that together so that really detailed information could be brought back to the council and you could make specific decisions about whether you wanted to proceed with that, what that might look like, what the timeframe would be, what it would be used for, those kinds of things. So I just want to make that very clear as we begin, that we're talking theoretically within this report and we're not committing to anything. So this is an overview of the report. There's a whole number of sections. Wanted to build a little bit on the city manager's tipping point. So these are some of the opportunities to start moving away from the edge, to move back from the tipping point. To begin with, I think we need to have sort of a history of, and sort of an overview of the revenues and how they work in the city compared to other cities. So we'll have some comparison data here, then we'll have some more specific data regarding revenues and expenditures in the city of San Carlos. We'll do a little overview of some of the increases and changes in taxes and fees we've seen the last couple of years here that have already done their part or attempted to do their part in mitigating this problem. We'll do a little overview of the general fund expenditures, an overview of some of the reductions that we've made just the last couple of years, and then we'll get into some of the revenue enhancement options and then we'll come back and end with the utility user tax and some more detailed information there. So this slide, this is a typical California city. I think we got this slide from the League of California Cities, a couple of years old, but I took a look at it and it's fairly accurate. Gives you an idea of typically where the revenues are coming from within typical California cities. And if you recall, the mayor's two-bar chart from the state of the city, and you'll see that again in a minute, this is really the other cities, you know, bar chart. So that'll give you some idea of the property tax being 11%, sales tax 10%, a lot of money coming from utilities such as sewer, water, that kind of thing. And you can see the other taxes, utility user tax there, other taxes, those kinds of things that are in other communities. Now we'll look at San Carlos a little more closely. Now you've got 37% of the city property tax. We're very, very dependent on property tax. Well, that's actually been, excuse me, kind of a good thing the last couple of years and that property taxes did pretty well. But as we've already talked about tonight... But as we've already talked about tonight, uh, the, the future growth of property tax isn't nearly as promising as what we've seen in the last couple of years and we're likely to see a slowdown. And as the mayor, uh, so insightfully pointed out, uh, as more and more of the housing stock in the community has turned over, uh, the last few years, now we're starting to see homes that are selling, you know, five, six, seven, ten years later as opposed to homes that hadn't turned over in thirty years. Well, that was a huge difference in terms of the property tax that we got when those, those sales occurred, uh, as opposed to, you know, the, the increased value, the difference between a, a home price ten years ago, five years ago, and what we see today. And as home prices soften and they, they relax a little bit, you know, two or three years from now, looking back five years, that'll be an even smaller amount when a home turns over. So that's a bit of a threat and that's something we watch closely because as you can see, it's incredibly important to this city, what happens with the property tax. Uh, sales tax, twenty-two percent, uh, but I think that kind of speaks for itself. Eight point two-five percent sales tax in our city. Um, we do, you know, build in, we, we look very, very closely, in fact, all the way down to the business by business level in terms of, uh, sales tax producers, in terms of trying to anticipate those numbers as we look at the revenue. Fees for services, another big category, and that's one in which the council actually does have authority, that the law gives you the authority to take a look at those. So we study those frequently, um, and go ahead and build those, uh, costs in. Uh, vehicle and motor, that's a big chunk that we're getting back from the state of California. That's a backfill amount for, for, I think it was Governor Pete Wilson, when, when he wanted to cut taxes and that was his big deal and, and in true state government nature, cut a local government tax that had been historically used from its beginning to fund police services. Uh, and so the, the state primarily because that tax was funding police services throughout the state of California wisely decided then to backfill it and they continue to do that today. Uh, so that, that's sort of an overview of the city's revenue picture. Now we have the, the rapidly becoming famous two-column chart showing how we can compare. We've already talked about some of the major issues. And obviously, as you change anything, if you were to add a utility user tax, there's a, there's a ratio going on here that would artificially lower, uh, some of the other amounts by adding a new category or enhancing a, a category significantly over what it is now by adding something new. But this shows you that, you know, in, in a lot of other communities, and we'll get into this a little more in detail towards the end of the report, there are some other, uh, taxes and revenues, uh, that are being paid by residents in other communities that aren't, uh, being paid by residents in San Carlos. And, and that's simply information for you to consider as you look at, um, how we compare. You know, we've talked a little bit about how we compare public sector salaries, uh, to one another and how we ought to reflect that, uh, somewhat to our, our, our revenue picture. And I agree wholeheartedly and I think in the years to come, we're going to see more and more of that discussion. I know the council, council members throughout the area are discussing it. In fact, I saw, I saw Ian responded to an email from the city manager, a Berlin game, on that particular subject, uh, earlier today. So I think, you know, I think when you talk about being out front, I don't know how out front you're going to be, uh, you know, with things like Vallejo going on and those kinds of issues and we're seeing more and more of that. But if you're thinking about how we compare salaries, shouldn't we think about how we compare revenues and look at those other revenue sources that are going on out there? It's kind of hard, uh, to just say we're going to compare the expenditures without comparing the revenues as well. So we need to take a holistic approach there. This, this slide gives us, you know, a ballpark in which to start thinking about that on the revenue side. Uh, now, now we're looking at the major, just the general fund now, we're honing in. And property tax is a huge amount now in terms of the general fund. As we talked about, property tax, sales tax, about equivalent to your police and fire services in the community. And I'm going to go ahead and predict that, you know, two or three years from now, they're going to be, uh, dead equal if they're able to keep up, uh, at the rate with, with what we're projecting based on what's happening today with those expenditures. Uh, but this is a very significant portion. So as you see, if you want to affect this picture, uh, in any significant way, you really have to work in two arenas, property tax or sales tax. Nothing else is going to affect it much, uh, save perhaps adding a whole new category to the pie chart that doesn't exist at all today. Uh, but that's some idea, uh, you know, the, uh, transit occupancy tax is the hotel tax, that's a, a significant part. We like those taxes, all city like those taxes. That's other people from outside our community coming in and paying tax. A lot of like the power centers in terms of retail. You know, one of the reasons you like that is because that's other people coming in your community and leaving their dollars behind. Now, when it comes to retail, that has some side effects too, in terms of they, they've got to drive here and that's an impact on your community and those other kind of things. Uh, business licenses, that's business registration. Uh, those fees are, are fairly steady. We like to see those stay pretty steady. It's an indicator that, that, uh, nothing too bad is going on out there. And then of course, franchise fees, those are typically paid by, you know, the cable companies, the utility companies to the city for the use of their, for use of our right of way for their, uh, services. Uh, let's see, I just think I just jumped ahead of myself here. Uh, the, getting a little more in depth in terms of the, the fees and the service charges that San Carlos is seeing, those are, your, your fees and your services primarily coming from, uh, the recreation programs. Uh, they do a wonderful job in trying to recapture costs. I think it's about, you know, as a department, they bring in about a buck for every two bucks they spend, uh, you know? So that's, that's good revenue. It also makes cutting here, cutting in that area that much more difficult because you've got to take into account as you reduce, reduce those services, there's going to be a corresponding reduction at a lower level of revenue. And so you, you end up having to cut even deeper. But that's where we're at. Uh, building, planning, public works fees, obviously, those are development-driven types of fees, uh, be they commercial or residential, uh, business registration fees, we talked about just briefly, sewer fees. Uh, I think as, uh, Councilmember Grokot pointed out, a, a very important part of, uh, of what happens, uh, in this community and the services that we provide are underground and hidden from all of us, you know, their streets, their, their traffic signals, their, uh, the, the water pipes, the sewer collection pipes, those kinds of things that we all take for granted. But, uh, in fact, um, when you study political science, it's actually one of the first items that, that take place in any great civilization. So it's our responsibility to maintain those despite the fact that we know and we take them for granted. Just to give you a little bit of an idea of what we've done recently in terms of fees, uh, we had an eleven percent increase in user fees throughout the city, uh, last year. That was based on, uh, the most recent, uh, fee study that we had done, a couple of years old. At this point, in fact, you'll see, um, as a proposal in, uh, next year's budget, that we're likely going to have to consider doing that fee study again. We need it to be relevant and up to date so that we can legally refer back to it as we raise those fees. So that's kind of an investment, uh, sinking cost, if you will, in future fee increases as those costs go up. We look at them, you know, as the, as our expenditures go up, there should be a corresponding increase in terms of fees. And we look more and more closely every year to try to recapture as much as we legally can and still, uh, uh, provide those services. And then also there's a, you know, uh, in, in doing some of that, we also look at, you know, building fees, for example, we have, uh, just getting dive bombed here. Uh, the solar fee in town, but a couple of years ago, the council decided to, to roll back entirely. So if you're going to do a solar, uh, project to your home or business, there's no fee that the city collects, even though we've got to review those plans and provide those services. And that was a policy-type decision. Now you may have to re-review that and say, "Can you keep doing that?" But it's based on other issues that the council cares about and that the community cares about. But again, reflected in, in, in something as innocuous as a, as a building fee. Looking at, uh, the business registration, uh, the municipal code allows us to increase at four percent, we increase at four percent. Uh, November two thousand seven, the sewer fees increased twenty percent. I believe they're scheduled to increase ten percent, uh, next year. Uh, the council several years ago did a three-year increase package. As you're well aware, there are some issues coming towards the city from SBSA, who provides the sewer plant, uh, that we're trying to sort of get out in front of. Um, I don't think we'll be far enough out, out in front as we, as that issue unfolds, but that's an issue outside the city that is affecting our, our fees and our need to do that, as well as investing in our own, uh, infrastructure. We've had some tax measures, uh, in town, uh, the last four, I think, that failed. Wanted to point this out, they were all specific taxes. They were all designated for a specific purpose. Two, uh, fire taxes, one that was a parcel tax, one that was a assessment district, uh, a tax for the scoot shuttle and a, a countywide tax, this was in a, a city proposal, but a countywide parks tax, uh, that failed countywide. Uh, but again, and these were all in various different kinds of forms, they were different kind of taxes and they were structured differently. But what they did have in common was that they were all specific taxes and they all required two-thirds vote. Uh, and a number of these came very close to getting two-thirds vote, uh, but not quite and thus failed. In terms of the, uh, the general fund expenses, uh, you know, this slide is showing you how we spend our money. So as you see, police and fire there on the right, that's all your property tax and sales tax. You've still got to fund everything else. You're, you know, doing that primarily out of fees and, and revenues generated by programs, those kinds of things. You know, you know, what do these things include? You know, on the public safety side, obviously, the traditional public safety services, but also youth diversion. The police department has a wonderful program, just won an award, uh, on their youth diversion. Their DARE program, uh, which is a program in this community that many people talk about. On the fire side, in addition to, to the medical and the fire, they're also doing disaster preparedness for this community. I don't think any of us would argue that, that any of these programs aren't important, that we don't want to see these programs continue. Those are all general fund programs. Those are all at stake right now. Uh, youth and adult survey, uh, youth and adult senior recreation programs, all of those, our athletics, our youth center, our adult community center, uh, Healthy Cities tutoring program, the special needs program, all of those things, again, general fund programs, all of them, uh, at stake. Uh, parks maintenance speaks for itself. Uh, we have beautiful parks, beautiful trails. Uh, the trails did wonderful in our, our survey, as we found out on the master plan. Um, you know, all these things, again, this, this maintenance, this level of care that, uh, as we've all heard, our Parks and Recreation Director Barry Weiss talk about, have a correlation that's been documented and proven that relates back to our property value. Uh, these services are part of the fabric of the community. They're part of San Carlos, they, they're part of what makes this community what it is. And you start to remove these and you have an erosion of not only the city services, but of the community itself. Pedestrian safety, uh, we've heard a lot about that the last, uh, year or so. Uh, I know Councilmember Grokot's brought up a project about looking more in depth at, uh, San Carlos Avenue as a whole in terms of how it functions, uh, and the pedestrian safety aspects associated with that major thoroughfare of the town. That's an example of a general fund expenditure, the green programs and the initiatives that we care about, the planning and building services, uh, that regulate the kinds of development, the size, and of course, the, the health and safety issues of those buildings. And then the backbone, uh, administration, finance, HR, IT services that we provide. All of those are general funds, uh, services and all of those are in jeopardy currently. So how do you untip the tipping point? If you're on the city council, or if you're a member of the city staff, or if you're a community member that, that cares about these issues, well, you've really only got five options. Uh, and Councilmember Royce was adept enough to point out the first one, and this one is pretty much all within your control, and that's that you can cut. You can cut the services. Uh, you know, uh, you know, it's, it's really the council's primary function to allocate the resources that the city has and to make the judgments about where they feel those resources are, are most important, can be most effective, where the, the residents that they represent would most like to see them go. So you can do that. You can eliminate some of the other services, maybe that you feel are less popular or, or less viable, or, or just plain are really important, but not as important as something else. You can take that money, rob Peter and pay Paul. Continue to provide these other services at an adequate level so that you can provide a good quality service. You just won't be providing as many services. Uh, and again, you know, the, the beauty with this is, you know, the five of you have the ability to make those decisions. Uh, you can increase existing taxes and fees. You know, you can go out to the voters and ask for more Measure G money, or raise the sales tax fee. You can do those things with the existing taxes in town, but you've got to ask the voters. And, and, and there are some other restrictions that go along with increasing taxes that we'll get into in a minute. You can pass new taxes, obviously, uh, you know, you can try to keep pace with future costs, provide, uh, the council, the city with new resources, uh, to consider service enhancements. You can look at grants and donations, you know, they're doing a wonderful job with the Parks and Recreation Foundation, as we've already heard tonight, bringing in hundreds of thousands of dollars for the Burton Park Playground Project. Uh, these are wonderful examples of some of the assets in our community, some of the positive notes that I think the mayor talked about during the state of the city, uh, that really exemplify the character of this community. But you're not going to solve this problem with donations and grants. Uh, and we'll get into a little more detail on, in all of those. And then you can, of course, increase economic development. You know, we've talked a lot about that. Uh, this provides additional tax revenue from the existing tax structure. So you're not changing the sales tax rate, you're just getting businesses that bring you more sales tax, that type of thing. Really, the only responsible approach for the city, the only sustainable, a sustainable approach, is to have a strategy where you're looking at all of those things all the time, where you don't take options off the table, but you look at them, you know, as, as the mayor said a number of times, you look at them within their context, within the character of the city. Not all, uh, economic development is good economic development, and I think the staff would agree with you there, and I'm sure the community does. Uh, but you got to look at everyone on a case-by-case basis. Just a real brief overview of what the city's done. Uh, we've cut one point seven million dollars in city services and programs over the last two years. We anticipate cutting at minimum another million in this coming budget. Uh, now, this is in a net reduction. There were other areas that had to be increased, uh, fire being an example of that, where costs had to go up. So money, you know, you robbed Peter, you paid Paul, you cut more in one area so that you had the necessary resources to provide what the council felt was a critical service to the public. In terms of administration, we've cut four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We've eliminated a number of positions, department head positions that were consolidated. Uh, we've reduced part-time funding in IT consulting. We've reduced travel and meetings, uh, including the city council, and we've reduced, uh, contracts for professional services. There was a change in the contract, uh, for planning services and community development to the tune of about a hundred thousand dollars. Our Parks and Recreation Department has cut about four hundred thousand dollars. Now granted, some of this, that I'm calling a cut, was actually some revenue increases in their funding schedule, but they were real dollars, so they equated to a reduction. Uh, but they've reduced part-time hours. The youth center is closed another day a week, I believe. They reduced the hours at the adult community center. They did eliminate a maintenance, parks maintenance worker, uh, not last year, but in the, the budget the year before. Uh, the police department has cut about five hundred thousand dollars from its budget. That's the elimination of the traffic sergeant, police officer, uh, the police services technician, and, uh, a number of public safety dispatchers, um, which, while I, I understand the discussion and the point in which you were talking about that, that those salaries continue on in some other vein and we can try to reflect those in a future budget, at least anecdotally, by equating them to an FTE. When those cuts were made, we did reflect that, the fact that the, uh, you know, the, the reduction in terms of contracting out with Menlo was a savings of, I believe, and I don't know if the chief's here right now, but I think it was upwards of about quarter of a million dollars a year ongoing. So I can relate that to you in terms of FTEs, if you'll allow me to, to talk a little bit generally. It's about two of the five dispatchers that you were paying for as a, in, in terms of a contract situation, you're no longer paying for those two dispatchers. You're paying for three instead of five. Uh, and, and again, I'm just speaking off the cuff here, but that's, that gives you some indication. And we did have those discussions as that specific issue and report came forward, as you might imagine, it was, it was, um, a very important, very sensitive issue when we were discussing that. Uh, in terms of reductions throughout the city, that you've got the deputy city manager, finance director, human resources director, the, the traffic sergeant, police officer, uh, parks maintenance worker, um, police services technician, the dispatchers. We've been able to do that without laying anybody off. And that's because at the staff level, we don't stop thinking about this all year. We don't, you know, you know, we don't get a break. There's no summer vacation, uh, from this issue for us. We're, we, you know, if, if somebody retires or somebody takes a job somewhere else, somebody leaves the city for any reason, we immediately begin to look at and plan for how we can maximize taking advantage of that, either that exact, um, vacancy or turning that vacancy into a vacancy someplace else in the city that would be more viable, easier to live with and deal with in terms of a reduction. Uh, and then here's some figures in terms of, we, we do have five that are frozen currently and I believe the city manager talked about that earlier. So getting back into your options, you know, now that you've done cutting and you feel like you've done all you can cutting, or, or you recognize at least that you're going to have to continue cutting, but you'd like to make sure that we're looking at all the other options, you can increase existing taxes. Business registration, we could look at changing the structure of how we do that. There are other options and ways of calculating that particular fee or tax, as you were, um, There are other options and ways of calculating that particular fee or tax, as you were, that would charge businesses more to do business in town. Now, the chamber may have something to say about that and businesses in town, but that would be one option and an example of increasing an existing tax. The transit occupancy tax, you can charge more for a room in San Carlos than is the average on the peninsula, although there, you'd want to look at something like that very closely, because you want to make sure you don't make your hotels uncompetitive in the market, so that nobody's going to stay in San Carlos, they're going to go stay in Burlingame. Sales tax is currently 8.25. I know there's been a little bit of discussion throughout the county and some cities about raising that, and I think there's one or two cities that do have higher sales tax rates. The fees increase, we've already, I think, talked about that, but, you know, to give you an idea, they tend to be going up 10%, 11%. In terms of new taxes, you've got the utility user tax. There's one in place in Redwood City, San Jose, Menlo Park, Palo Alto, Mountain View, and over 150 other California cities, and I have some more information on that for you later. The Measure G partial tax for parks in the city, the $6 partial tax fee brings in, I think, about $60,000 to $70,000 a year in this community. The city then has an obligation to match it, so it's true contribution in terms of revenue is about 60 or 70, but for that particular fund and that particular purpose, which is parks, it brings in, you know, about $130,000, $140,000. You could do an entertainment admissions tax, not really going to generate a lot for you in San Carlos, given the types of businesses we have in town. Benefit assessments, you know, we have seen that for the downtown and other kinds of things, but those are going to be real specific types of things for real specific projects. In terms of revenue enhancement options on new taxes, you've got other jurisdictions throughout the county and throughout California that have other types of tax measures that we don't have in San Carlos. We talked a little bit about, you know, what those would be, parcel taxes, fire taxes, those kinds of things. Millbrae and Pacifica have a fire tax. Belmont, I think, did a certificate of deposit or some such for their library and its maintenance. Many cities have assessment districts for landscaping, lighting, pre-maintenance, those kinds of things. We've got some listed up here, sewer plant in Half Moon Bay. Burlingame has a benefit assessment district for the San Mateo Kennedy Convention's Visitors' Bureau. So these are ways in which cities, other cities are bringing in some revenue that we are not. In terms of alternative fund and grant opportunities, we'll continue to pursue those as always. In '07, which isn't this year, but last year, we did bring in quite a bit of grant money, 403,000. We have established, you know, some alternative fund development programs in the Parks and Rec World. They're raising quite a bit of money for the Burton Park Playground Project right now. So we're enhancing contributions and the gifts and time and the volunteer efforts. I know I saw former Mayor David's out in the audience, and volunteer efforts are something that he cared a great deal about, and I'm sure continues to care about and have the ability to affect in a positive way for the city. One thing to remember about alternative funds and grant opportunities and volunteers, it takes a significant amount of time, staff time, to solicit and administer those programs. So there's not a dollar-for-dollar value there. And there's also, in regards to grant funds, and quite frankly, donations, often the need to do matching funds. So you've got to have money to be able to participate in some of these things. You have to continue to be able to be a partner, as the mayor talked about during the State of the City. And what we're lacking right now is any real significant ability to go out and effectively partner with the community on some of these issues, like the library, like the youth center. We don't have the resources to be a good partner, and we need to look at addressing that. And then, of course, you have economic development, and this is, you know, this is a double-edged sword. You know, some people may look at it as the, you know, the goose laying the golden egg. Other people, it may, it may be the bane of their existence, depending on your point of view. We've recently hired an economic development manager last year. We've completed the five-year economic development plan. We've got the San Carlos Marketplace. I think that's a really good example of a quality economic development project in the city that really wasn't driven by the city, it was driven by the market. There was a good piece of property, it was available, there was a developer with a good idea and the ability to go out and get some quality tenants that the city felt would be good tenants, it was in the right part of town, it fit, and they came in, and by all accounts, they're doing tremendous out there. We've got the PAMP Development Agreement completed. Now, I'm going to guess that that took about six or seven years from the time that first came forward to the city. As a result, in two more years after the beginning of the next fiscal year, we can anticipate receiving about three-quarters of a million dollars in additional taxes, and that's wonderful, and that's going to help. But by the time you get that money, it will have taken you about 10 years to get it. And I don't know, you know, we could talk to Brian about some history, about Home Depot and some of the other power centers in town, and how long it took those to come online. So it's not quick. You can't expect economic development to really solve the current problem. You've got to be planning for the next problem in terms of economic development, and, you know, and if it's able to help you at all, like the San Carlos Marketplace, and it falls in your lap, and it's the right kind of development for the city, then all the better. We're doing the general plan update, the East Side specific plan, the council economic development subkey went out last year, looked at a number of other communities to try to get a sense of what was out there and what they liked, and what they thought would work in San Carlos. In terms of speaking a little bit more specifically on the utility user tax, we're going to go over just a couple items. What is the utility user tax? How does it work? Who has one? You know, what would be the steps involved in pursuing utility user tax for the November 2008 ballot? And then just some of my reasons, my thoughts, my reflections on my eight years in San Carlos about why you might consider doing that. So what is the utility user tax? The utility user tax, or U U T, is a tax that may be adopted by a city on the consumption of a variety of utility services provided within that jurisdiction. U U T may be adopted as a special tax earmarked for a specific purpose, say, fire, or police, or a project, a library. That would require a two-thirds vote to pass, because it's for a specific purpose. Or as a general tax, you can adopt it, you can say, this is for, you know, the whole host of services that the city provides. You know, list them all, it's for our general fund, for all the services that we provide or could provide out of that general fund within reason. And that type of measure would require a 50% plus one vote to pass. In addition, U U T is often called a green tax, because it provides an additional incentive for utility users or consumers to consume less of that utility, and thus reduce pollution, reduce waste, and help the environment. Many consider U U T to be a more progressive type of tax, because wealthy, wealthier individuals tend to consume a greater amount of these utilities and thus pay a higher amount of tax. But with a U U T, there is some, there is some ability on the taxpayer's part to lower the amount of tax they pay by affecting the amount of utilities that they have, or the types of utilities that they have. So how does the utility user tax work? The rate of the tax and the use of those revenues from that tax are determined by the local agency, in this case, the five of you. A U U T may be adopted by the voters as proposed by the agency. You know, and just to give you an example, 70% of the cities in California that have a utility user tax have a rate of tax between 4% and 6%. The types of utilities that the utility tax is most commonly applied to include electricity, gas, telephone, those are the three highest. In fact, I think all the utility user taxes that are in place in California cover those three. I don't think there's an agency that has a U U T that doesn't have a U U T on electricity, gas, and telephone, including long-distance and cell phones, although I'm not 100% sure on cell phones, but definitely on telephone and long-distance. Cable television comes in next. Not all cities have a U U T on their cable television, but many do. Water as well, they're about neck and neck. Sewer and sanitation, in terms of that being taxed, a much lower level. You see a real drop-off when you compare the cities. A U U T is adopted by the city, it's collected by the utility, Comcast, P G and E, and it's regular billing, and then those proceeds are remitted back to the city. So who has a utility user tax? As I said, there's over 150 cities in California that have this tax. More than 48% of the state's population currently pays the utility user tax. So when we talk about paying employees at the median, you could see where the median is. It's right here. Half the state is paying utility user tax. Cities in our vicinity with the utility user tax include Redwood City, Menlo Park just passed one last year, a general tax. Daly City had one for a long time, had to go back, just I believe, last year, the year before, to their voters and renew it. Portola Valley, Pacifica, Los Altos, Mountain View, Cupertino, San Jose, Alameda, Berkeley, Emeryville, Oakland, San Leandro. So what would be the steps moving forward? Well, tonight, you would simply direct staff to begin working on preparing an R F P to go out and talk to a consultant and find a contractor who can provide us with an in-depth financial analysis of the potential tax. Would be able to assist in generating some polling data to find out what the appropriate level might be if you wanted to pass one in town, and the actual creation of the actual ballot language that would go forward. You know, once you, you know, we, staff would bring that R F P back to you, you would have the opportunity to look at it, make a decision about whether or not, and who you wanted to hire to go provide those services. And at that point, you're still not committed to putting it on the ballot, you're simply saying, we want, we want to know the real members. We want to know all the details associated with this. That first step, this step tonight allows you to make that step. And hopefully, just another, you know, three to four weeks, we'd be back before the council with some recommendations on bringing some, a firm on board to help us with that. Once you've selected a consultant, which again, would be another touch point for the council to make a decision, that firm would go out and begin to performance work, and then you'd actually have the ability to look at the data and craft a measure that you've, that you wanted to craft, and then finally decide if, in fact, you wanted to place that measure on an upcoming ballot. So why do it? You would do this so that the city council and the city can remain a viable part of the fabric of the community, so that you have the resources to make the judgment calls and the resource allocations that it's your job to make. So that the city has the resources to continue being a viable partner with the city, so that the community in partnership with the city has the opportunity to make positive choices about future services and programs, which have, to this point, greatly defined the character of the community. Because we all recognize that our community values the high-quality services and programs they currently receive, because we recognize that our community would be the sole benefactor of these proceeds of a U U T, and that those proceeds would go towards funding the programs and services that are cared for and desired by the community. This isn't a tax that you have to share with the state or the federal government. They don't take 90% of the property tax or the utility user tax away, or, you know, nine cents of, you know, nine out of every $10 that residents pay in sales tax in the community going to the state and other programs. This would be a tax for San Carlos, for San Carlos services. And this would simply give the people of San Carlos the opportunity to weigh in and partner with you on solving the city's budget problem. So that's it, not so much in a nutshell, but those are your options, those are the five ways you can go about mitigating the budget problem. Be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much, Mr. Maltney, on an exhaustive report. Council, questions? Mr. Maltney? Any questions?
Actually, I do, Mr. Mayor. Two questions. Do we have an approximate cost for the consultant, and what timeframe do you expect this work to be done within?
I think we talked a little bit at the staff level and we expect the consultant would likely, and this sort of depends on how far you go with it. You know, there are different points in which the council, you may see the financial data and say, now we want to pull the plug, or you may see the polling data and you say, now we want to pull the plug. So you may not ultimately spend all of the dollars, but I would estimate that you're talking about $30,000 or $40,000. The work would have to be done by, you know, it would be my estimate that you'd want this completed by probably the end of April, mid-May, end of May at the very latest, in terms of having the financial information to the council, in terms of having all of the options associated with doing a utility user tax, so that you can have your policy discussion, so that you can make a decision, so that there's adequate time then for the public to engage in the political campaign process that would be associated with putting this on the ballot. Mr. Maltney?
I have a question that's just more to the information we're being given, not really about the utility tax, and that is, when I look at our budget reductions, so the page that's labeled 2007, 2008 budget reductions, and it says we cut, under administrative, we cut $460,000.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm trying to understand that number in this sense, and maybe, you know, I remember trying to ask this at the time we did that as well, and maybe I still didn't understand it then, obviously, since I'm asking the question now. We eliminated the deputy city manager, the finance director, and the human resources director positions-
Correct.
-as directors. However, we created a new department head, as it were, which is your position, administrative director or something like that?
Correct. You merged them down into one, and you did create some subpositions as well.
Right. And so that's what I'm after, is-
Correct.
-we, here, if one were to read this and not know that background, they might think, well, we cut three positions and that was it. But in, on balance, we cut three, added one, so we're at two positions raw that we cut, if you will. And then we created these subpositions, which, you know, they're not as high-paid, you know, that's the, that was the point, the finance director is not, was paid more than the finance, what's the position called again, a finance manager?
Finance manager, yeah.
So you still have the-
Considerably.
Yeah. So there's savings, but at the same time, you're creating essentially a new position that does have a healthy salary and benefit package.
Correct.
So given those, all that shifting around, the savings was 460?
Yeah, and that 460 can't be contributed solely to that one particular item. When we did the whole, if my memory serves me correct, when that report came forward on the actual reorganization of the department, that was the original constituting of the Administrative Services Department, I believe the actual savings associated with that particular item and the other, and there were soft costs and operational costs and other costs associated with it that were also reduced, was about $300,000, just with that one initial item, including those salary reductions. Again, one of the things that, you know-
So if I may, just to clarify then, or to understand it, subtracting three positions, adding one back, that's what I would call department head positions.
Right.
So now we're at a loss of two department head positions, essentially, and then adding in the subpositions, when you, when you put that on one side versus what was there before, the savings is about $300,000?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's all for my questions.
Okay. Do you have anything?
I just, I just wanted to make a point that I tend to agree that we need to, I think it's, we should explore every opportunity, and I think we should go out and get an R F P or R F Q for this, for this tax. Whether we take it, you know, when we get the information or not, that's another issue. But I do want to make the point that no matter what we do, it's not going to be here, even if we got this and in November passed a tax, it's not going to help us this coming budget. I just wanted to make sure everybody understands, this isn't going to help us on this one. So we're going to have to figure out, go back to the grindstone. Just want to make, I assume that's the correct statement?
You are absolutely going to the grindstone.
Yeah.
You know, if you were to do something like this, it would give you the option of potentially restoring those services at the end of the year, but you're going to go through the process.
It's going to be, yeah, there's no, there's no panacea, no matter what we decide to do on this. Thanks.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I did have one other question.
Sure.
And again, it doesn't, it has nothing to do with the nub of the question, which is, utility tax, go forward with that or not, but I'm just trying to understand the information I've been given.
Okay.
So the, when I look at these bar charts, how does San Carlos compare?
Right.
And there's the bar chart. It adds up to 100%. And so what I'm trying to understand is, where we, you could talk about percentages, but then there's raw numbers.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess what I'm driving at partly is, it's an interesting chart to me, because as you pointed out, San Carlos pays 37% in property tax versus typical cities, 18%.
Right. And that's not that they pay that, it's just that that's what they, that's what that portion comprises of the budget.
Sure.
It's not that they're paying- It's not that they're paying a different amount, it's just it means a different amount to our general fund.
Okay. It's an interesting argument to me, because while I see what you're, you know, what this drives towards is the logic of, let's go ahead with the utility tax, because other cities pay 11% in other taxes, and that's where a utility tax would fall, versus we pay 5%, oh, 7%. Okay. And we don't pay it at all, but then there's other taxes, 11%, and we, our city pays about 5. But I guess what I was doing, trying to put all this together, is if you, if you put all those pieces together as one, our property owners are paying far more in this city than property owners in other typical cities, because you have to add the 37, I suppose, plus the 5. I don't know what other taxes are. Do you see what I'm driving at?
I see what you're driving at.
It's already, already, when you live in San Carlos or any cities on the peninsula, because property values are inflated so high here because of, there's only so much land and we live on a peninsula, and so the cost of owning a home, you buy a home here and you look at, "What's it going to cost me in taxes when I own this home?" It's up here. You live in a typical other city, it's down here. And then we're talking about adding to that, and that's my concern.
Right. I mean, you're correct up to a point in terms of the fact that obviously as the property values are higher in the town, you are going to pay more tax for a home in, depending on when you bought it, in San Carlos than a home, say, out in the Central Valley. But in terms of what this graph really is telling you, it's talking about the relationship of not your property tax, but all the property tax, and just sort of how they combine in a pie chart kind of thing. This is really just a pie chart that's squeezed upwards into a bar, you know. But the other side of that particular property tax discussion is that it's equally expensive to provide city services in our community than it is in the Central Valley.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have a couple of, one question. In the early pie chart things that you had, it said a typical city pays 39% in fees, and in San Carlos it's 13%, which is a-
Yeah. And you know, a lot of that is driven by the fact that some cities have other utilities.
Yeah.
They have their own electrical utility, or they provide, a lot of cities provide water. And so as you see with that pie chart that talks about the sewer fee and how big it is, if you had a water fee that was equally big, you could imagine that really would change the dynamics, but you would be providing a water service, so.
Right. And then I know the question before us is to really whether or not we should continue on to get more information about this, not a decision point necessarily tonight, so. But another piece of information would be interesting to me, because, you know, certainly concerned like Councilmember Grokka about what that, what that cost is to the average person, is maybe get an idea for what the associated dollars are in other communities as well. Because percentages are one thing, but try to wrap your head around, what is that actual, if it was in the 4% to 6% range, what is that sort of per capita increase or per household increase?
I think that information should be critical. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, we are, as far as I understand this item, we are going to hopefully vote sometime in the next 10 minutes or so on whether we want to do an RFP. Did I misunderstand what you said?
No, I believe that's-
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thought I said, although-
I misunderstood what you said.
Okay. Before, if nobody has any other questions for staff right now, I have one public speaker comment on this for Bonnie McClure, and then we can continue the discussion.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you.
Bonnie McClure, San Carlos. I've lived here almost 50 years, and I urge you to go ahead and try to get the consultant to get going on the utility tax, because if we had a utility tax, it would make a percentage of 100%, and so the percentage of property tax would be less, because you'd be making up 100%. Some of these other cities have other ways of getting the percentages. So our property tax looks like, when you have 100% of something, of revenues, and you're comparing percentages, if you charge something else, that goes into that 100%. So the others decrease in percentages.
But in raw dollars, they go up?
Yeah, because it's just a relational chart. Yeah. Okay. So the other thing is that I would urge you to please ask the consultant to consider doing the water, the utility tax on the water, as well as the other three items that were in the beginning, because what we're trying to do is conserve, and maybe that would urge the people to conserve water as well as their electricity. Because in this town, lots of people pay a lot to water lawns and not have native plants, and we've got to do something about that.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment on this issue?
Her public comment brought up another question for me, if I may.
Please come forward if you'd like to speak.
Just as a clarification-
Any interest in time? Go ahead.
Sure. Mr. Malpighi, based on what Ms. McClure is saying, the percentages would be pushed down because you can only have 100%. So I understand what she's saying. And I guess that, what I'm trying to understand with this chart is, is this based on, say, a typical city general fund revenues per capita? Or, you know, what's the other governing, there has to be another X factor in there, another governing factor in there?
It's the percentage in which their property tax makes up their general fund budget. So in other words, you could be, you know, the city of San Francisco, which is vastly larger than San Carlos and hard to compare, but still, what this is saying, what this would say if you were looking at them specifically, is how much of the property taxes that's paid in that, in that city represent the relationship to the other taxes that make up the 100%. So the public speaker, Bonnie, was absolutely correct when she said it's a relationship diagram. If you, if you just added a new tax by that mere fact alone, we would be less dependent on property tax, because it becomes a smaller portion of the, 100% of the budget revenue that's available.
So I guess what's missing in this information, which perhaps in the future, when we, as we, if we move forward on this item, one of the things I think we need to look at then is, similar to when the chief gave his report from the police department, he looked at per capita. You know, what's the, how many officers do we have per capita? What's the cost of our police department per capita? Because if we're talking about increasing costs to our citizens, this 100%, our 100% may be greater per capita than the typical city 100% per capita. Does that make sense? If one city's 100% is a dollar and ours is $2-
You're right, but we don't live in Stockholm.
I know we don't.
It has to be. I can tell you right now it's going to be higher. It's got to be higher. We live in San Carlos.
Right. And it would be, and the Bay Area metropolitan region would be higher than the state average as well.
Sure.
And again, it would get back to, there really should be, and I think, you know, I know a lot of you work in the business world, there really should be a correlation between, you know, the region in which, you know, you're paying those revenues-
Right.
-and the cost of the services that are being provided in those revenues.
Thank you very much. With the permission of counsel, we'll finish public comment, just because I, let us get sidetracked there for Galgo, sorry to keep you waiting.
Yeah. This is, I'm seconding Matt's concern over salary ladders. And also, at the end of Mr. Malpighi's comments, I believe he said, "And then we could talk about adding positions back on again." So I'm just like encouraging counsel to have a different mindset. When you take a position away, you don't always look for funding to return it. That we think of these new funds as really being provided for upkeep and maintenance and everything, not adding positions back in again when we get the new funds.
Thank you very much. All right. Further counsel discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I propose, I don't know if this is the time, but I'll do it anyway and see if there's a second, but propose a motion that we direct staff to issue an RFP for the items that were listed in the staff report, for information about the utility tax and how it possibly could be used.
I'll second. Okay. And with that, let's have some counsel discussion on that motion.
Go ahead. Oh, well, I'll jump in then. Couple things. First, I'm going to, with all due respect to staff, I'm going to pick on the staff report a little bit. And some of this was addressed in our discussion on the other item. I would like to turn to page that gives us our options as a counsel. Let me find that. I put earmarks on everything. Yeah, that's, I just have to find it there. Okay. So how to untip the tipping point in safe city services, and it gives five tools. And we've already talked about this to some extent, like I said, on the other item. I would say there's seven, because, and I would add two in. And I just say this for our sake, as a counsel, so that we can keep thinking in this direction. Another option that I see that's not on here is holding steady or even cutting the cost of employees' salaries and benefits. That's a tool we have as a counsel. This is, this is what's, the tools available to counsel. And that is a tool we have available to us. We discussed it under the other item. I don't think we should forget that. Another item that we have, or an option we have, Mr. Royce mentioned, which is consolidating services with neighboring cities and entering into JPAs or contracting out if it's less expensive to contract out than it is to have it paid, done by an employee. And that comes from a council member who has railed against contracting. But I would emphasize that that was under certain conditions and a certain way of contracting. I'm not always opposed to contracting out. It depends on what you're looking at and how you're doing it and what the machinations of it are. So I would just point that out to us as a counsel. When we get to the issue of the utility tax itself, there was a thing in the report, it's both in the bullet points, and it was in the staff report, and I know where that is, so I'll turn to it in the staff report. When it talks about why to do this, and it talks about, considered a green tax because it provides an additional incentive for individuals and businesses to become more energy aware, and then there's a growing demand within San Carlos to become a greener community, and this tax would help promote those values. I just want to state for the record, I'm strongly opposed to that kind of taxation. Taxation is not for the, if you will, the community morals to be imposed upon the individual through taxation. Taxation is to gain revenue if it's needed and if it's justified, and I don't, this council member doesn't believe in trying to manipulate the actions and the choices of the community or the individuals of the community based on taxation. I think that's wrong in all circumstances for government to do that. I just-
So let me just ask you a question.
Yeah.
So like gas taxes or tobacco taxes, you're against all those?
Sure. Even with, even with tobacco taxes. If, I don't believe in government taxing tobacco in order to gain revenue. If we think tobacco's wrong, we should just outlaw it, instead of allowing people to kill themselves by smoking, but at the same time, hey, we're going to take your money through taxation on cigarettes. No, I don't agree with that. That's, those are my principles, and I'll live by those. And therefore, when we get down to looking at what we should consider, I would say no on electricity and gas. Those are necessary things for people to heat and cool their homes and live and so forth. It's kind of like when you, you know, go into the grocery store, there's certain things they don't tax, because everybody needs those things to survive and live in a modern society. I would say the same thing basically about telephone, more because when you look at your telephone bill already, sit down someday and tally through and see how much tax you're paying on your telephone. Mine, it's about 30% of what I pay in my phone bill is taxes and fees of whatever kind. And I think they're high enough. So I would, I would mix that as an idea. And then same with water, it's a necessary thing to run your home or your business. You have to have water, you have to have sewer, you have to have sanitation. And sanitation, we demand that of people. We demand that you participate with us in allied ways. You don't have an option out. You can't say, "I'm not going to get garbage service." It's required. So I don't see taxing that. The only thing on this list I see taxing, because it's a choice for people to have it or not have it, is cable TV.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Royce?
Yeah, we're talking about raising taxes. This is a big topic, and I think we need to just step back. And I'd like to not articulate how this utility tax would work, because I think we should proceed with the study, but a couple attributes that we need to include in that thinking. One is, is this permanent, or is this just for a particular part of time? I mean, if we're doing our job right, five, six, seven years from now, hopefully the economy and the sales tax and the property tax stay strong and we don't need it forever. I'm very concerned, well, I'm not concerned about permanent. I'm more interested is that we do take a conscious effort of looking at permanent versus a period of time. Second of three thoughts is the, well, I'll give you an example here. We have a partner in town that does taxes too. It's called our school board. I attended a presentation that our superintendent made about two weeks ago. And they're in a situation similar to ours, but also very different. They get their property taxes, actually, quite a bit of property taxes. They also get both kind of general fund, operating money, like Measure D, which ends in a couple of years. It was that $96 per parcel. That went into staff and libraries and safety and languages and all the things that the schools were going to cut. They also do bond measures, $38 million bond measure to improve all the schools that we've seen. So you see, they get the money from the state, they are able to raise taxes and get the citizens and parents to approve that and other taxpayers. And also now, they have educational foundation, which has done a tremendous job in raising funds. Kind of relates to our kind of Park and Rec Foundation, it relates to our $6 Measure G park. You know, we're doing a little bit in that area. But there are partners who are going to the same taxpayers, raising money to run their operations. Their only risk, I think they've done a tremendous job, that their only risk is that all three of those categories has gone in to fund headcount, teachers and staff. And the risk with that is you get that momentum going, and if something hiccups with educational foundation, or when Measure D ends in 2011 and they're not able to come up with another one, all of a sudden you're sitting there with teachers that you have to lay off. So my second point is, I think we need to be very concerned that if we come up with a utility tax and it just goes into the general fund, is that all staffing? And if it is not permanent, I have a major concern. I love hiring people, but I don't like firing people. And one way to alleviate this problem is to think about, a lot of that first presentation on the things that we, from an expense point of view, that are growing faster, well, in the general fund, the things that we have been deferring are a lot of your capital items. You're talking about sewage, you're talking about parks, you're talking about flood control. You're talking about the capital part of the shuttle part of a shuttle service. Those types of capital items are investments in our community that we have been borrowing from to fund our general fund, that eventually we're going to make those investments in the infrastructure, the capital investments in our community. So I would like to see very much this type of utility tax, if it had attributes of being consideration of not churning up the headcount so that we have a longer-term problem later on, and making more investment than day-to-day services. And my last point would be, and this stems from my experience in our Architectural Review Residential Design and Planning Commission, we are very supportive in this community to build bigger homes, 3,000, 4,000 square foot homes, where you have the in-laws, you have more kids, and on that same lot, you're putting more on that property. And those people have more cars, they have four cars parking out, they have more, create more traffic, they use our parks more. I really am encouraging and like to see that development and having people have the right to do those improvements, but it does leverage more on our services for the city. And so although utilities has a tiered rate, I would even like to look at, rather than like you put the stake in the ground at 5%, I would like to also consider a tiered rate, like a 3.58, so that those people that have bigger homes, that use more electricity, and administratively, I think you could function on a baseline, just like your PG&E deal that does. But the person that lives in a thousand-square-foot home, or- But the person that lives in a thousand-square-foot home, or you're in the apartment, you're not contributing as much. The businesses also we need to consider. The standard business, you know, we don't, we've got to be really careful in charging them too. So looking at some kind of tiered, a tier on a tier for both businesses and residentials, I think is something that would get all the attributes or the benefits that Jeff is talking about, but it's probably being a little more sensitive to putting the affordability where it can be afforded, if that's a word. So those are three things on the attributes. I'm very much in favor of proceeding, but I, before we make a vote on it, I think we need to think about some major components of how we would address this when we're talking about raising taxes in San Carlos.
Great.
Thank you.
Any comments?
I'll keep my comments fairly brief. I, in looking for points of commonality with my colleague, Mr. Grocott, I would concur that we need to look at hard cuts. If there's one thing I would want to look at in terms of cutting, I mean, it may have been slightly humorous to say, looking at draconian cuts, but I would rather look at our budget and do one really hard set of cuts, strip it down to bare metal, rather than every year coming back and cutting, 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 cutting. Death by a thousand paper cuts is not good for morale of our citizens, of the people who work in our city, or for long-term planning. So if we're going to cut, let's cut. Let's cut it hard, let's make it work, let's try to balance it as best we can. In terms of, you know, is this a tax increase or not, this is a study. And whether or not a tax goes through is going to be up to the citizens. So I would look forward to providing the citizens with every bit of information and all the tools that they will have to make an informed decision.
Many of the points made here are good. I think what the point we're discussing is whether we want to have an RFP to talk about utility tax. I have a numerous amount of stuff to talk about when we get to that point. Tonight's not the night for me to do it. Turn it over to the mayor.
And thanks for that, Bob, for the sort of focus back on what this issue is. As staff pointed out, there's a several-step process to this. And I compliment council on bringing up some great items for us to think about. And I do think that council need to give staff feedback on the things that we're concerned about, the scaling issues, I think an interesting one to, not only see what other communities have done, but an interesting one, I think that's kind of forward-looking, coming from your planning commission background, which I think is great. I think the headcount issue is another one for us to, we had some public comment on that as well. You know, you don't want any situation like this where you start to lose your discipline. I don't think that's the intention on anybody's part, but certainly, we all need to keep our focus on that. Tonight's about, you know, coming back for components of an RFP for us to relate to. There's no one thing that's the entire answer. We have several components, we have to be diligent at all components. I think probably council's all looking at it that way as well. So with that, I'd like to call for a vote on the motion before, unless there's any other discussion.
The motion again is, is what?
Just a motion to approve an RFP to go out and, for the study of utility tax in the city.
Okay, because the, the options given to us is to receive the report and discuss preferred approaches and methodologies, or to provide staff with alternative direction. Now, if we just tell them to go out and do an RFP for this, then they could, they could be pretty boggled with that. I heard some comments that I agree with, primarily from Mr. Royce, about permanent versus sunset, and then a tiered rate. I don't necessarily agree with that, but I heard that. And then, my comment does deal with the specifics of the RFP, if we're going to do it, is do we go out for any kind of utility tax, and have them look at any kind of utility tax? Or my preference is, no, we just look at the cable TV tax.
My, my, my motion would be that we, we are not, we're not the experts in this. I would expect, I'd be shocked if staff did not come back, or if the RFP didn't reflect any and all of the comments that we had tonight. We want to have every possible, I mean, I want to say every possible, within reason, every possible option, whether it's, you know, and how much it would generate. Cable TV might generate a dollar, a PGN might generate $2. I don't know what it would generate.
But let me go ahead and correct this to staff. So based on what the motion that we're voting on right now, would that include, it sounds like council's interested in whether some of the components or whether some of the options, would that give an analysis of that for us to give feedback toward?
We would do an RFP to bring somebody on board that could help us, guide us through all of those kinds of questions and answers.
So the RFP, the scope of that, for this particularly, be an analysis and perhaps of what, how, what form it might take with some of these different options we're discussing tonight?
We would be looking to provide information to the city council on what form it might take, the process, what it can be applied to, what it might not be applied to. We would hope to generate some ideas as to what the revenue it might generate for each of the options. Certainly, another one of the issues is whether or not it's a permanent tax, or whether it's for, you know, all of these are issues that we need to flesh out, and we're looking for authorization, really, to go out and find the team to bring back to you, to provide you with answers to all of those questions.
Okay, so it's, it's an RFP specifically for the consultant, for you to be able to-
Yes.
-get the consultant on. But are we, are we comfortable with that? Is that specific as far as-
I want to be, I want to make it, everything.
I just want to be clear. I've made a number of points here that are very important to me.
Sure.
And I, when I was speaking with the city manager earlier today about this, I don't mind going out to the public or doing an RFP, investigating this issue, even going out to the public, even giving it to the public to vote on. I have my concerns. That said, I can vote for this because I don't mind putting it to the public and saying, "Do you want to do this?" In fact, I think it's a good idea, because we do hear a lot from certain individuals, certain interest groups, if you will, about initiatives that they think we should be involved with. At least when you do this, it kind of puts it out to the whole community. Do we really? And do we, are we willing to pay for it?
That's right. I think that's, I'm sort of hearing that from everybody. So with that, unless there's any other discussion, I'd like to call for a vote.
Councilmember Ma?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you. And we will now move on to item number 7C.
We'll make this a much shorter point. Good evening again. Just clear this one out. Okay, so, you know, we've talked about now the problem, and we've talked about what some of the solutions could be, and we've added to that list, and we appreciate that, certainly. Now, we're going to talk about just a little bit of the housekeeping that we have to do in the existing budget. And we've talked about some of the deficiencies, and we can look at that again in a little while, but this just gives you an overview. This is our currently adopted general fund expenditures. We're, at this point, with about four months left to go in the year, projecting that we're going to have about $900,000 in savings. Now, that, you know, a lot of that would probably make sense to you, because we've already talked about the hiring freeze that's in place, so as we haven't filled those positions, they're saving a considerable amount of money for us. And of course, we always continue to look throughout the year for ways to save money, and that sort of helps us get a head start on next year's budget. So these things will help bring that unallocated general fund balance that Frank and city manager Mark Weiss talked about earlier, up to about 4.4 million, we think, at the end of the year, up from 3.9. In terms of the revenues, they're budgeted 23 million, 168. We're projecting they'll be up about 24 million, so we've got about another $1.2 million in revenue that wasn't currently budgeted. And we do consider this, by the way, as we put next year's budget together, so to the extent that we're finding revenue that we think is something that's going to be there next year, we'll already take it into account as you see the budget get to you and it sort of bare-bones form next year. And an example of that would be a transit and occupancy tax. We saw an increase last year. It was kind of a large increase for one year. We hadn't really seen anything like that in years and years and years, and we weren't even sure exactly why that happened. So we did raise it in this year's budget, but we didn't raise it all the way, because we just, we couldn't get a real good handle on why that was happening. It was well over and above a corresponding relationship with sales tax or what was happening with the economy. And, you know, and then so far this year, it's coming in at about the same level it came in last year. So next year, we have a comfort level to go ahead and raise that up to the full amount, and that helps, again, with the problem for next year's budget. As we've talked about extensively tonight, we did get about $630,000 in an ERAF rebate this current year from the county of San Mateo, which is money that's taken away from the city, by the state, to augment education schools. The school, some schools qualify for it, other schools don't, it's kind of a complicated formula. In this case, one of the school districts didn't qualify for it, so there's kind of this, what do you do with the money? Well, our county and Marin County decide, you give it back. And that's what they've done in the last couple of years. Obviously, this is a very uncertain relationship in terms of this revenue, and we can't really predict what's going to happen with it in the future. But for this year, we've already got it, so the check is in the bank. Sales tax, very near to the 3% growth that we budgeted. We came really close to hitting that number right on in terms of budgeting, and we think we'll be pretty close this year, too. Licenses and purports, that revenue's up, but as you would imagine, you've raised some fees and things throughout the year, and that helps move that up. And you didn't have all that information when the budget was adopted. Talked about TOT. We do get more money from the state in terms of vehicle and lieu. You know, funny how things can change at the state level so quickly. Last year, the year before, they were finding ways to give more money to cities for something, for infrastructure, for paying back some of their SB 90, some of their unfunded mandate claims that cities had against them. We were seeing more than we've seen in a long time from the state, and that cap gets turned now, and we think we see less. So non-general fund, now we're, you know, for the first time tonight, we're talking about other funds other than the general fund. We do have other funds out there. We've got RDA, we've got sewer, we've got gas tax. We've got a lot of other things happening in the city that don't share the same fate as the city's general fund and aren't struggling as much, and they're, they're going out there and they're providing their services. You know, we are seeing a decrease in those expenditures, but it's really primarily all related to just the timing of capital projects. In terms of the revenues, down just slightly, but again, that's just related to grants, very, very minor changes. In terms of the adjustments themselves, you know, we make, we do internal adjustments within the budgets, within the line items of the budget, to the extent that they don't go over the council appropriated level of that budget, so we may move, you know, a conference to, you know, a line item for a meeting that we host here, or we may move pencils to some other copier services or those kinds of things within the budgets. Very, very minor changes. They don't exceed the appropriated council budget. We do have one issue as part of the proposal, and that's a reclassification of our current accountant-trainee to a payroll and benefits technician. That's, that would be an increase of $750 this year, you know, $1,500 on an annual basis. You know, you double that number, so it'd be $1,500 a year of an increase. As council member Grocott pointed out, there's an item on the consent calendar, and it doesn't quite read right, because the item on the consent calendar really is just authorizing you to create the class specification, the consent calendar item. That's just the description of a position called benefits, benefits and payroll technician, payroll and benefits technician. All you're doing is saying, "These are the duties of a, you know, payroll and benefits technician with the city of San Carlos." That item can't authorize us to fill that position or to reclassify it. It's just a paper document. All the descriptions of the positions in the city are handled that way. But I agree with you wholeheartedly, the way it's written on the agenda, it said reclassification of, it should have just said adoption of the class spec. And as you know, council member, we do that kind of thing all the time on consent, but so my apology there in terms of the language, and I'm glad you caught that, so we'll follow that up. But there are a number of reasons for that particular minor reclassification as part of the continuing reorganization of the administrative services. We've actually moved somebody, the payroll person, from the finance department into the HR department, which as you know, are on opposite end of the building. And that has a lot to do with the fact that our new finance HR system and the way payroll is conducted, because there's a lot more work now on the HR side than there used to be in terms of providing payroll. In addition, the accountant-trainee position is, and this is kind of a sensitive topic, the accountant-trainee position is a represented employee, meaning it's in a bargaining group. Well, we need that, we need to work with, from the management point of view, on the management side, to be able to provide you with the kind of options at the table that we're, you know, obligated to provide you with, and you've, you know, you've touched on a few of them tonight. We need to work very closely with that position in terms of what information we're gathering to provide council at the bargaining table. So by making this change, we'll also be moving, the payroll and benefits technician position will be in the confidential group with the other confidential HR employees that provide, you know, and have the ability to provide those kinds of services and aren't covered by a union, so they don't have that sort of built-in conflict of interest potentially, not saying that they do. So those are, those are really the reasons there. It's a real small amount, as you can see, and that is the full cost, so there's just a slight difference. And we would be linking that position, this payroll and benefits technician position, to the existing HR technician position, because we feel that they're basically two sides to the same coin in terms of the types of services that they provide. There's also a request to do a reclassification of the existing budgeted administrative clerk position in the building division. This position is currently vacant, left to take employment elsewhere. And looking at the duties, we feel that they're more in line with a senior admin clerk position, the difference which is about, I think it's in total on an annual basis, is about $12,500, but for the remainder of this year, $7,500. What we would do in this particular instance with this position, as it's vacant, we're backfilling it with our receptionist right now, because she had a lot of experience at the front desk that kind of related, is what we will do is conduct an internal recruitment for that position and try to hire and employ from within the organization. And again, that gets back at our strategy of moving a vacancy to where it makes the most sense. Having a vacancy in the building department doesn't really help the city a lot, because nearly 100% of the building department is funded by building department fees. So if you cut a position there, you really have to cut the revenue correspondingly, because it's, it's the expenses that calculate the fees. So if you no longer have that expense, you really can't justify that particular fee. So that aside, if we're able to conduct a recruitment, hire somebody from elsewhere in the organization, we may create the opportunity for council to consider a staff reduction as part of this coming year's budget, that's a vacant position elsewhere in the organization that would have an impact on the general fund problem. So that's the thinking behind that. There's a couple other no-cost items, bringing in a grant for the youth center homework and the corresponding expenses of that grant. The Burton Park Playground, asking to raise the amount of that project, to bring in more donations, and then correspondingly, expend those donations on the project. There is a proposal to replace the two underground roll-up doors under City Hall, the big garage doors. We've had numerous breakdowns the last year of those doors. Obviously, there's a real public safety issue. Fortunately, we haven't had them both go out at the same time, in which case, you know, everything that's in there, including a lot of police cars and police personnel, wouldn't be able to get out. We've had them go out one at a time, so we either go out the exit or come in the wrong way or something. It's, you know, costing us a lot of money to bring somebody in to fix those every time they break, and it's kind of gotten to the point where we think, you know, for the interest of operations, we ought to just go ahead and replace those, and there's no time like the present to do that. And then, of course, there's some funding in here for the traffic signal project in terms of actually going ahead. Council talked about authorizing that particular project, the traffic light at San Carlos and Chestnut, but they're ready to go out and start some design work, so we want to make sure that's reflected in the budget. So overall, we're asking for $233,000 in changes in the budget. However, $200,000 of those dollars are matched by revenue that would be brought in to offset the costs, the donations to the parks, the homework grant. They're just complete one-offs. So there's really only an increase of $33,000 to the general fund budget before you tonight. And as I pointed out, this particular budget is well within being able to absorb that.
Great. Any questions? Oh, you're sorry.
We're just about done. We just got to cover some of the non-general fund stuff. There's a whole series of projects in the report as well for non-general fund. These mostly relate to the 2007 bonds that we just passed, the $7 million of RDA bond money that the city has. So that's Holly Street 101, begin studying that particular project, Holly Street widening to go out and begin a study there, Britton Avenue widening, again, you got to study that to get it going. El Camino, real lighting and landscaping. These are really all just project start costs that we'd like- These are really all just project start costs that we'd like to, the Public Works Department and the Community Development Department would like to begin before the next year's budget kicks in, and you would assume these all come forward again in the budget, sort of the full amount. So these, again, are just increases to the, to the bond money that you've already got in there, so they're just offsetting out of that particular fund.
Mr. Malkey, excuse me.
On this last one, didn't we go over every one of these items already?
We've been over every one of these, and that's all I was going to say about it.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, good. Every one of those items we talked about already, Mike.
That was the $500,000, $500,000.
Any questions for Mr. Malkey?
I just have one, a clarification, and I heard this from our GPEC chair as well, that this idea of widening Holly Street associated with the Pamp project, and I'm just asking for a reminder, I don't remember us agreeing to widening Holly Street associated with the Pamp project. I remember us talking about the interchange, but I was not clear about.
The first 200 feet, do you want to go ahead and, staff?
They're, they're both in there, and they're interrelated. I believe you have to do both in order to make the traffic lessening work, so, but they're both mitigations in the approvals for the project.
So is it widening Holly from one end to the other, in other words, from industrial to old county, or no?
Something like that.
Close to the intersection, then?
Correct.
The first 200 feet, I think it's, okay, actually, isn't it?
I think it was 300 feet, but.
Right, well, I just, I mean, in the ballpark, was it?
I remember zero feet, so, you know.
Most of the benefit was in the interchange itself, but to have the appropriate stacking for that all to work, you needed somewhere between the 300 and 500 feet, yes.
Thank you.
If I may just make one last comment, just to point out for the council, there are two recommendations before you. You're acting as the city council, as well as the RDA board, for two separate resolutions for the mid-year budget adjustments.
Thank you, Mr. Malkey. So.
I'm ready.
Do we need to approve 5G before we do the other resolutions?
You do not.
We do not.
Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
Through the chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt council resolution 2008-8, and RDA resolution 2008-.
150.
To modify the fiscal 2008 general fund operating capital budget expenditures, et cetera, et cetera, that were listed in our alternatives on our staff report.
Second. Any other discussions?
Given what we just talked about, I do have concerns a little bit about item one and item two in here about, I don't mind redefining the positions, but the increases in pay, in the one case, it's pretty small this year, 750, and then 1,500 annually. In the other case, 12,500 on an annual basis is, it's, you know, compared to 24, or, you know, to our general fund expenditures, it's not a lot of money. But that's the point, guys, is every time we tick something up, and we have to continue to pay for it, then it just, it just continues to increase the cost of government, and the cost of government primarily is, as Randy Royce pointed out earlier, is personnel, personnel cost. And so we're given these numbers, we can negotiate those numbers, I suppose, we don't have to accept them, we could push back with something else.
City manager, would you like to respond?
Through the chair, I mean, this is part of a strategy in which would, by allowing the existing employees to assume additional responsibilities, it gives us the opportunity to look at reducing positions further and saving substantially more money in the future. I mean, this would be very short-sighted, in my opinion, if we were not to make these accommodations to allow for the additional duties to be picked up by existing staff, if we're truly looking at trying to make long-term adjustments to the staffing level for the organization as a whole.
Well, those numbers, no disrespect, the numbers aren't clear to me in the staff report that that's what's going on. Something was said by Mr. Malkey, I heard it, but it's not clear from this staff report that you're making these increases, they look like increases, but they're really reductions because we're going to find savings elsewhere.
Right. And the thought is, and the reason for that is because, you know, we're, you're basically making an investment on having a future opportunity. And by consolidating the duties today, today you pay a little bit more. But the intent is to create the opportunity where, in just a couple of months, when you adopt next year's budget, you'll, we will have had the time to conduct an internal recruitment, move some people around, and created a vacancy that you can then eliminate. So your headcount goes down by one, so somebody got a little bit of a raise, but you cut a whole position as a result of it just a couple of months later. That's really our intent here, we're trying to be strategic, rather than, you know, not do this and end up laying somebody off in a couple of months when we deal with the budget.
All right. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other discussion? We have a vote, please, on the motion.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes. And that brings us to item 5G, which was reassigned to the end of the agenda.
Let me take another vote for the RDA, if you don't mind.
I'm so sorry, I jumped ahead, didn't I? Look at that.
The attorney's face. Director Ahmad?
Yes.
Director Grisilli?
Yes.
Director Grocott?
Yes.
Director Royce?
Yes.
And Chair Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, since I polled the consent calendar item, and we just approved this other item, it fits well to just ask for the approval of item, what is it again, 5G?
5G.
Second?
I'll second.
Row call, please.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
And with that, I believe we're going to adjourn to close session. Thank you very much, everybody, for attending.